Are we ready?
Good.
Call to order the February 25th, 2021 Business Meeting. Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners, Administrator Gary Schmidt.
Thank you Chair. First, our staff support today. Christina Twilliger, Clerk to the Board. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Roll call. I'll start with the Commissioners on Zoom. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
And the meeting room. Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here, all present. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a nice crowd today and thank you all for coming. We are also holding this meeting virtually and in person. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. With that in mind, I would like to remind all participants, including staff, elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. The Board welcomes public opinions from all points of view. Gary, can you introduce the first item, please?
Yes Chair, we start with the presentation from Portland General Electric on the power outages and power restoration in Clackamas County. We are honored to have with us today Maria Pope, the Chief Executive Officer of Portland General Electric. We invite you to please come forward, Maria.
Please sit at the dais, right here, yeah. Maria, thank you for taking the time to come today and give us the update. I appreciate your presence here. With that in mind, you may start.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. First of all, Chair Smith, Vice Chair Savis, and Commissioners, thank you very much for having myself here as well as Larry Beckedahl, who is our Vice President of Grid Architecture, Integration, and System Operations. Also with me today is Randy Early and Dave Robertson, both of our Public Policy Area and Local Government Affairs. I appreciate that we have gone through quite a traumatic period of time over the last couple of weeks. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the slides and the pictures that were sent. Do you have, did you, were you able to see the presentation?
No, they've not seen that yet.
Okay, should we put it up on the screen so people could see it? Is that possible?
Yeah, do they have that, Gary, ready to load it?
Yes, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So Gary, can you move the slides forward or how? Christina, thank you so much. So why don't you just go through some of the pictures, if you don't mind Christina, of what took place? Because I think a picture paints a sort of a thousand words here. Thank you, we have about 10 slides, Christina. Okay. Great, okay, let's just hold it right there Christina, if you don't mind. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your patience and support of our crews who worked to restore power. They came to join PGE crews from as far away as Montana to northern British Columbia, obviously Idaho and Washington as well, eastern Oregon. We even brought equipment in from southern California as well as many other states. This was probably our largest restoration effort in our history. And on behalf of Larry, Dave, Randy, and I, and many others at PGE, I can't thank you enough for the partnership and the terrific communication that we had with all of you throughout these, this traumatic event. There's no question that Clackamas County was the hardest-hit area of the storm. From Lake Oswego to Milwaukee, to West Lynn, Oregon City, Gladstone, through the unincorporated areas and rural counties of Estacada, Malala, and Cambie, it was really quite something as you can see from the pictures. One of the things I think is in particular is that your rural and unincorporated areas have as many people that you're taking care of and looking after as all of the combined cities within the county. So I really want to recognize you personally for all of the work that you did on the front lines. And I know Chair Smith, you went from door to door to some of the most vulnerable residents in your communities. We're also beyond grateful for the partnership that we had with your disaster management group, Nancy Bush in particular, facilities engineers, first responders, roads department. Gary, thank you for all the time and conversation that we had with yourself as well as your staff. From the onset of the storm, our highest priority was around hospitals, water treatment facilities, essential services that so many of our community members rely upon. We then turned our attention to those most vulnerable, those with children at home, those with elder facilities, and really focused not only on those who have medical certifications, but working collaboratively with all of you to make sure that we know who was in the greatest need and who was vulnerable. So thank you for your partnership. Please know that we continue to have outages in this area. We have just over 500 as of this morning, and we are continuing to work round the clock to get those people restored. They are in some of the most remote areas of the county, and there's quite a bit of trees and debris between where the main roads are and their residences. Overall, through the whole storm, we restored about 420,000 customers who lost power. About 30% of those, 144,000, were in Clackamas County. So no question, you were one of the hardest hit. It's interesting to see, but there probably were many customers who experienced two, three, four, even six outages during this period of time. And 96,000 customers in Clackamas County experienced more than one outage, which is why our restoration total numbers, you know, exceed 700,000 over the course of the event. One of the things I think is interesting as we look back on this, and it's truly been our largest restoration effort in the history of our company, but the data shows that this event was 10 times more destructive than the wildfire events that really hit you all very hard in the September time period over the Labor Day period. So we know how frustrating it is, and we fully appreciate for those who were from extended periods of time without electricity, taking care of children, elders, medically fragile. And, you know, our hearts go out to those who had so many challenges and difficulties during this period of time. We continue to progress. We are in the final stages of restoration. Again, I mentioned we have just over 500 customers still out in Clackamas County. We have about 2,000 customers, a little bit over, out throughout our entire service territory. And these ones are truly challenging to get turned on. So we will, as you can see, as go through these restoration efforts, the slope begins to come down on that line. So now let me turn it over to Larry, who can go through really what it takes to restore power and the progress that we've made and how we go through our stages. So Larry?
Great, thank you Maria. Good morning, Chair and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. And if we can maybe slide to the next slide, Christine? Thank you. So on the left-hand side, it shows, the previous slide was the outages for the entire service area, and this shows for Clackamas County. And you can see, as Maria was noting, just how many customers and how it came in, the wave and how it's fallen off. And on the right-hand side is the wires down. Wires down, it means that we're getting a call from a customer and notifying us that there's wire down. And I'll talk a little bit later. You see there that it's upwards of, well, if you take in that curve, it's growing. There were over 10,000 total, but in Clackamas County, but turns out that there's a little over 1,300 that were actual electric wires. You have phone, you have cable, but we notify the public that don't touch the wire. If there's a wire down, stay away from it. And really, that's important to understand. But it is frustrating to, is it phone? Is it cable? Is it? So you need somebody that has expertise to be able to make that decision and not put the public in safety arms there. So just calling that out as we look at that chart. But as you know, from the beginning of this storm, your teams were well aware and the critical infrastructure that was being impacted, your own infrastructure as well as our own. And with that, with the ice damage, I think we talked on Saturday about just the ice and what it weighs and the amount of damage the ice does. You add wind to that, and you add trees to that. It's the worst combination. And so we clearly had experienced that. So PGE and your staff members worked round the clock to bring back the Tri-Cities wastewater treatment plant, which lost redundant service from both Abernathy Substation and the Jennings Lodge Substation due to the upstream transmission loss. So again, we very seldom lose the transmission, but in this case, we lose the transmission. We lose both substations, which have redundant feeds to that facility. That was at 11:03 a.m. on Saturday, February 13. By Sunday, February 14th, at 6:30, 8:00 p.m., we had the transmission, we had the sources back on to be able to feed. Now, thanks in large part, though, the backup power generation provided through the county and through Portland General Electric's dispatch, distributed standby generation, excuse me, we kept many of the water and wastewater treatment facilities onboard at all times. And so that was the Tri-Cities wastewater facility, the Oak Lodge, the North Camas Water Commission, the Sunrise Water Authority, and the Clackamas River Water. Without that system, you know, we would have been, again, loss of water. And that's a partnership between us, where you actually own the generator, we actually fuel it, we manage it, we maintain it, and we test it on a regular basis. And then it's available for us if we had an energy supply issue. And I think we talked on Saturday about Texas and their energy supply. It's a benefit to us on that behalf, but it's also a benefit to you when we have an outage like this to keep those facilities running. So we want to think about, are there other opportunities like that? When you consider the county and the, what are the priorities you want to make sure are resilient and are able to withstand outages of this nature? So just to put that as food for thought on the table. But Providence Willamette Hospital also lost power at approximately 11:03 a.m. on Saturday. And as they lost power, their primary and their alternate sources were lost. And it wasn't until Sunday night, again, approximately 8:00 p.m. that they were restored as well. So now we have water, wastewater impacted, and hospitals impacted as well. We have been putting all resources available into getting customers back on all through this period. This morning, as in this morning, we had 250 crews still operating, 128 line, or tree trimming crews. And throughout the storm, more than 50% of those have been here in Clackamas County. That is nearly three times the number out in the field that we have ever had on our system before. Additionally, we have had 2,000 support staff behind the scenes in this restoration, including damage assessors, customer service, scheduling, logistics, engineering, system control, and support personnel. We are especially grateful that we have a strong mutual assistance program with the utilities in the Northwest. And so as Maria was mentioning, not only from Oregon, Washington, Montana, all the way down to southern California, we brought crews in to help us out. And this was unique. The ice was here, and your Clackamas County was part of that epicenter. If you went south, you didn't see much. You went north, it was snow. And so this ice-wind combination really hit here, and it's, I would call it the tornado or the hurricane of the Northwest. So with the last 247 customers remaining out in Clackamas County, and I use that number because we have a lot of irrigation pumps that are still out. And so as Maria is mentioning, we've got 500 customers approximately in Clackamas County. You can see that there's irrigation accounts that are impacted as well. But we're restoring those, and it's a significant amount of effort. And I think if we go to the next slide, kind of forgetting, there was the numbers for Clackamas County and showing how many poles to be replaced, 205. We've installed over 140 miles of new wire across. And again, poles, very similar to that, is transformers, about 280 transformers here in Clackamas County. It's just an awful lot of materials, and you can imagine the logistics that go along with that and the crews. And go to the next slide. This just gives you a real quickly, an understanding of, we show the seven steps, and at the beginning, you can restore lots of customers, and then it gets harder and harder and harder as we get closer to smaller groupings, where it's down to the neighborhood and finally to the individual. And I think on the next slide is the one that I wanted to reference here this morning, is getting to the home. And so of those 247, chances are pretty good that they've had a service torn off. So the wire that's leading up to the top of the house there, you see, maybe has been torn off. We can go and repair that. But if the mast, the pipe that goes down to the meter base is torn or broken, that falls under an electrician. And so there's this division between National Electric Safety Code versus National Electric Code. Lineman works on our facility, electrician works on the homeowners. And so there's a coordination that goes on and permits to allow that to be able to be worked. And so we're working with your teams. There's even from the state, electricians licensing permitting, there's an allowance there for us to coordinate, go in and actually do the permitting after the fact. But there's a coordination there, and we need to make sure that that happens, and happens quickly for customers. So just know that there's pain there that delays things to make sure it works right. So on behalf of that, the ice storm was unique and significantly impacted vegetation. And the duration of winds, multiple freeze-thaw cycles, and the ice loading was especially damaging to trees. We operate our utility here in the heart of the Pacific Northwest, perhaps the most dense rural forest and urban tree canopy in the United States. And we know approximately half of our outages are caused by vegetation. Please know that during the last several years, we have doubled our investment in vegetation management. Our goal is to be the leader in the industry for vegetation management, which includes more frequent trimming, targeted removal, and proactive wildfire and storm risk reduction. And those come hand in hand. As we think differently about trees and being fueled for fires, we have to think differently about how we approach vegetation management. So the recovery effort on the back end of this event is substantial, and we're grateful for the county's collaboration before, during, and after these types of events. We have a lot of cleanup, a lot of poles that were left in the middle of the night alongside the road, the broken, damaged debris, and we're going to be going through and picking all that up and cleaning that up. We'll need continued strong partnerships with Clackamas County and the cities, and the homeowners, building on established synergies with our energy management teams, forestry and road crews, and also with you at the policy level. Want to again shout out for Nancy Bush back here and all the efforts with the emergency management and the coordination was huge. So thank you very much on that behalf. So with that, let me turn it back over to Maria.
Great, thank you. If you don't mind moving to the next slide. We are deeply invested and have a long shared history with Clackamas County. Not only are the poles and wires that we've been talking about located here our substations, but we operate our oldest generating facilities, our hydro operations along the Clackamas. Our employees live here, many, many of them, and we've been here for over 130 years. It's really, in many instances, the heart of the history of our company. And we appreciated being able to work during the storms collaboratively with you, not only in hospitals, sewer facilities, water treatment facilities, elder care facilities and others, but also in terms of warming shelters, providing batteries, flashlights, charging abilities as well as other essentials. And one of the things I think, as we've talked about, we are a part of this community, and we feel for all that you have gone through, and we want to make sure that we're also part of the recovery. And Chair Smith, in conversation with you on this topic, we're committing to $225,000 to the five counties that have been hit hardest, but $75,000 of that will specifically go to Clackamas County. And we want to make sure that we get your advice on how those funds should be spent, and that we work also with nonprofits and others. And of course, this is between PGE and also the PGE Foundation.
Thank you very much for that. I think that is wonderful. Yes, we've had multiple conversations about our recovery efforts, and I appreciate you so much stepping up with that. And please continue.
Well, thank you. We've also talked about those who are hardest hit with their energy bills. And going back to the beginning of the past year, and I want to recognize that this is not the first disaster and crisis to strike Clackamas County. You were hard hit by the wildfires, all of which, as well as this storm, all of which came on top of COVID. And so going back to the beginning, we established a fund with, through the company and through company funds to help those hardest hit with their energy bills in addition to connecting them with Oregon Heat and federal assistance. That with the support of representatives from Clackamas and this region as well as others, we've expanded and made it larger. So we encourage those who are struggling with their bills to please call our contact center so we can connect them with the assistance that they need and those funds that we've set aside.
Excellent.
I also want to note that in conversation with yourself as well as with the terrific relationship we have with the administration and the staff, that we're going to meet monthly going forward. Larry mentioned our distributed generation program. We'd like to be able to really understand how we can expand that and make it more resilient and more reliable. Clearly, you know, how we interact with hospitals showed that they went without any blips in their operations, and we should take that to the next level to make sure that that's the case across the board. Also, I want to make sure that we're focusing on tree trimming, really discussing the rights of way. We have doubled our tree trimming budget over the last number of years. We spend an extensive amount, but there's no, right now, there's no amount of tree trimming with the existing right-of-ways that will work. So we need to work collaboratively on areas where there are extensive trees that could cause not only outages during a period like this with the heavy ice, but also risk during wildfire. So I think, and I think there's some other topics that we can begin to work on, and so I would suggest that we meet monthly for the balance of the year and here on out to work collaboratively on these items. So thank you. If there's any questions you have or anything else?
Thank you Maria Pope and Larry, and the other gentlemen in the room too. Yes, we have been talking, and I am very happy that you've heard us. And you know how far that goes. Clackamas County, our citizens are weary, and you've recognized that. This is our third declared disaster in 11 months. And I think when the wildfires came through and started picking up the pieces, we just didn't see this coming. And maybe that's our lesson, that's maybe my lesson as Chair and for our Board, to start looking forward more and not looking backwards at what happened in the past. And I certainly want to work on that for the future. I think that partnership between Clackamas County Government and PGE is certainly my goal, to work on issues that you and I have talked about moving forward to make the, to harden the grid system for PGE. It's a good company, it's one of Oregon's oldest companies. I've known many of the CEOs. I know so many of my friends who work for PGE as linemen and technicians, and it is just retired people, young people, the whole gamut. And so, you know, it's in all of our best interests that PGE remain viable, that we're able to deliver power to our residents, and the delivery system is most important. The impacts to us have been devastating. People in Clackamas County did everything they tried to stay warm during this winter outbreak of snow and ice. Our medically vulnerable were at risk. We did an unprecedented action by calling out the National Guard because we thought we needed to do wellness checks on the people who had been out with power for over a week. A news reporter asked me, well, what took you so long? And I said, well, we had never been out of power this long before. And it looked like, looking forward, if you go through the county, it's like a tornado had hit. And we knew that getting to these areas would be very difficult for anybody. So in conjunction with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and our search and rescue, and our National Guard, we had about 20 National Guard who knocked on about 2,000 doors. We were able to identify them through social services of the people who might need the help the worst, but then other people, my niece got contacted. She texted me, Aunt Tootie, the sheriff came. Oh, the sheriff came. I was so happy. And we got other reports that people were almost in tears when somebody knocked on their door to say, hey, are you okay? And I think that's the very least that we could do as government. Governor Brown was very gracious in my request, and I believe she has offered that we will not have a cost for the National Guard. I think that's just stupendous. I appreciate her efforts so much. I've had conversations with the governor as well. This is a really good time, I think, for both our entities to build public trust. PGE must refill its reservoir of goodwill for our ratepayers, and you are doing that, and I would like to help you in that effort as well. You have done a marvelous job with your assistance of 75,000 to our government, and I'm sure there are a lot of people in this room and listening that have ideas what to do with that money. Right? Yes, and so I'm thrilled to death. I appreciate it. This is going to be a wonderful opportunity for me personally, a learning experience, working collaboratively with our private sector ratepayers, ratepayers and utility providers. And just, I, yeah, I'm thrilled to death. And so with that in mind, I'm going to, I know all of our Commissioners have comments. And Martha, I'm going to start with you.
Well, thank you Chair Smith for being so gracious. And I know firsthand the work you're doing because I was driving through it this morning, actually, on 43. And it's, the amount of trees that are down, the poles that were down, the wires that were down are pretty evident, and the work is still ongoing. And I want to thank you for that. And Maria, I'd like to thank you as well because you gave me a very lovely phone call one evening, and I really appreciated the fact that you reached out to Chair Smith and the rest of the Commission in that way. And I'd like to give you some kudos. I had an opportunity to volunteer at the Cambie Warming Center, where we were handing out, you know, goods to people that they needed, things like flashlights, snacks, coloring books. Really, really, lots of people coming in over, I would say, over 300 people, if not more, came through there. And your PGO, PGE folks were present. They were there, they were coming in and out with things for people to take home with them, and it was really an amazing experience. So you and your, you and your folks were really present the whole time as we were going through this as a county. And so for that, I want to thank all of you. I've worked with all of you closely, Dave, and Randy and I go back a long way. And so I know we're in good hands with everyone.
Well, thank you Congressman.
From your entity, so thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Schull, do you have some comments?
Yes, thank you very much for all your work, PGE, to all your personnel. My question is, in areas where overhead lines are subject to damage from trees, what is the plan to go underground with some of those runs of transmission line?
Sure.
We don't need an answer today, but that's something that people ask me about throughout the county, especially those people who hear those transformers blow out after a tree comes down on those lines. So it's something to think about, but when you get a chance, let us know what the plan is.
Well, Commissioner, we get that question quite a bit. Why don't I ask Larry to just give you a little bit of an overview? And I And I do want to stress that while it doesn't seem apparent, we have outages from those who have underground services as well during this ice storm. So Larry, do you want to?
Commissioner Scholl, I would say that first, anytime that you have an opportunity in thinking about undergrounding, when it's new construction, new subdivisions, new buildings, that's the best time to go in with undergrounding. Cost is very comparable at that time. Conversions are very expensive and it's everybody's landscape and, you know, damaging or cutting through roots, trees, et cetera, so you can do an awful lot of damage. The point of transmission, that's when it starts to get really expensive. And the higher voltage lines, the distribution, again, different than transmission. And how we approach that, we're going to be thinking differently about with wildfires. There may be certain areas. Sometimes it's covered wire that works really well in that space. And so we'll be looking at and putting that in many locations. There will be space where undergrounding makes the most sense and so we'll have to consider that. But there's no one right answer. As Maria is pointing out, we had trees that were pulling over and some of the extensive outages, I know we're working with down in South Salem where the trees pulled all the primary, the underground, the ground. And so now you've got to repair all of that and it takes much longer than the pole and the wire in the air. So, again, where is it appropriate? How do we think about doing that into the future? And like I say, tree wire, there's some other ways that we should be thinking about even hardening further, which can be micro grids. It's similar to the DSG program where the distributed standby generation provides resiliency into, and we've done that for emergency operating centers and fire departments. And so there may be those sorts of applications where we can provide resiliency. So it's not an easy answer. And what we, as we approach the grid, we'll be thinking about what is the best solution for those locations. And I think we talked a little bit of that on Saturday as we study what, for earthquakes, for wildfires, for ice storms, you know, each of these, we've got to think a little bit differently about how to best approach and make sure that we get the best redundancy or best reliability from the system. But it's a great question. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
One of the things I'd like to have on our agenda for our monthly meetings with Chair Smith, Gary and others, is a collaboration around how with your new development, we can collaborate to reduce the costs and have our engineers work very closely with your engineers. We've done that in a couple of other jurisdictions and I think it would be very helpful for both our companies in being able to invest the dollars to the maximum benefit for resiliency for the community.
That sounds wonderful. Commissioner Savas, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to just give my appreciation and thanks to PGE, Maria, Randy, Larry, all of you, and especially the session we had on Saturday to bring us up to speed about what was happening. We had some of these discussions about undergrounding and obviously, Larry, you touched on it today that, you know, the, you know, should that be uplifted from a tree, the underground takes a lot longer to repair and is pretty significant as well. So there is no, there is no perfect solution for these kinds of conditions. Mother Nature has its ways and Mother Nature dealt this one heck of a blow here. I really appreciate, I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things my colleagues have said thus far. I think you've covered a lot of good territory. I appreciate the visual, the pictures. That's just gives us all an idea how severe the impacts were. And knowing that half of the outages were caused by trees coming down, and I'm, you know, very fond of my trees in my yard. I know a lot of my neighbors are very tree conscious and we have a great tree canopy in lots of urban Clackamas County as well as rural Clackamas County. My, my family, who lives in Eugene, they experienced an ice storm a few years ago and E-Web and their tree cutting program, tree trimming program, that is, have a, offer the ability for people to either kind of do an evaluation and removal of a tree at no cost when it's close to a power line, utility line. And my, one of my family members took advantage of that program recently and had a tree removed that he was concerned about. And this was, of course, after the ice storm, so it's on people's minds, it's in the forefront. And so I'm just wondering if that is something we can perhaps do in Clackamas County or PGE, we can partner with somehow to somewhat evaluate it. I know that a lot of, we discover in these storms that some of these trees are rotted internally and they're practically dead, but they're still standing. And when we have a storm like this, you know, they fall and we just kind of, oh my gosh, the whole thing's rotted out on the inside. And it's a huge expense for a lot of people to take down their tree or evaluate that, you know, where it's appropriate. But we do have to recognize that trees do have a huge environmental benefit and it's important and it also offers a lot of other amenities as well. So we cherish our trees, but we also need to be mindful of how they can destroy somewhat of our resiliency and so forth. So the only other, the only question I really have is that, what level or percentage on some of the more important transmission lines, if you will, that are main, I don't know what you call them from a nomenclature standpoint, but the main lines that carry a lot of the load through some of the urban areas, is there any redundancy in those by your systems that have redundancy so that should one line fall, there's a backup? I just don't know what percentage of that is.
Sure. So thank you very much for your question. And first of all, we would love to work with people to take out the trees. We trim trees every few years and a tree that has been replaced with a smaller, younger tree no longer needs to be trimmed. And so overall, frequently can be much less cost to actually take out trees rather than come back and trim the ones that are actually rotten through their core and whatnot and then obviously the outages are significant. Let me ask Larry to address your question with regards to transmission. This storm was extraordinary in its impact to transmission. You know, probably, we talk about it as a one in 40-year storm, but I don't think we've ever seen the kind of impact to transmission that we had this past couple of weeks. So Larry?
Yeah, Commissioner Savas, it is a really good question. Of the 20 substations that serve all the neighborhoods that went out, they all had redundant feeds with the transmission system. At least two sources into each substation. Some had three and even one had four. So that means four different lines or three different lines coming into that substation, but a minimum of two. So they all had redundancy. But the transmission, again, was susceptible to the ice loading. And so when you added the two inches of ice onto the wire and you added the wind, that tore the wire down. We haven't seen that in our transmission system. Well, here, I can't think of an occurrence. I've been here for seven years with PGE, but, you know, the 37 years, I've only seen it one other time in the Northwest where it actually brought the transmission lines down. So it was significant. It does, as you say, you want to say, it doesn't happen very often. Well, you know, it did happen. So now we've got to think differently about how we build it. What should we think differently about that? So it's a great question, but yes, we had the redundancy. And as I mentioned about the wastewater treatment plant, that had two substations, redundancy going into the facility, lost both of them because the transmission to both those substations was lost on all sides. So, so it is, that was a, it was a huge impact and we had to get that all up and running before we could even get to the distribution network. So it's a very good question. Thank you.
Paul, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want to close with this. I just want to just, again, thank PG, our, everyone who was involved in trying to put everything back together, to open up the roads. I mean, it was devastating and there's no way your crews could get out there until some of these roads were cleared. So I know that everyone worked hard. Mother Nature dealt its blow. We've responded and we'll learn from this, but I'm very glad to hear, Maria, that the suggestion of really stepping up our game and working with our staff more frequently to increase our resiliency and work with our communities in improving that resiliency. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Fisher, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair Smith, and I want to thank PGE as well. One thing that we talked about when Maria and Randy gave me a call, I believe that was yesterday, was the fact that our system is designed for ice of a quarter to a half an inch and the ice that we saw in this storm was between one and two inches, which is very dramatic. And so what I'm looking forward to in these future conversations is leaning on the science to determine, are these events going to be more frequent and as severe, is the first question that I'm hoping we can get a scientific opinion on. And then the next question, of course, that follows it, we've alluded to today, is how do we effectively and strategically plan for a system that is resilient? And I really appreciate the partnership.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, and absolutely we will work together on those things. And I think irrespective of how many storms we have seen in the past or will see in the future, we know that increasingly people are dependent upon their electricity, not only for light and heat, but also for their livelihoods. And during the pandemic, they have children at home, many more elderly people are at home. And so we fully appreciate that the reliability of the past is not enough for what we need to have going forward and we look forward to working collaboratively on how to be more resilient and more reliable.
Thank you very much. I, just ironically, Commissioner Savas and I have had our lobby meetings with our federal delegation in Congress this week. Usually we fly in, but now we do them by Zoom. Boy, it saves a lot of time and money too. So we've been reaching out to all, our both senators and our five congresspeople, and I have asked them specifically if they would consider a request directly from Clackamas County to the federal government for assistance in the monies that we have spent and that we will spend. And I think I mentioned to you folks, and I will mention to the public, in order to get a national declaration of emergency, the threshold is fairly high. For Clackamas County, it's $1.6 million damage done to government infrastructure. Unfortunately, I cannot, we cannot add the cost to the private sector or our utility in that. In addition to that, the overall cumulative cost to the state needs to be 6.5 million and Clackamas County needs 1.6 million. Clackamas County has 16 cities. We're inviting our cities to submit the cost of, all the costs that they have incurred during this, so we can get those numbers and move forward on that. As we know, Clackamas County has been hit the hardest. We would probably hit the 1.6. Those numbers are going to be a long time coming because our debris removal will be very expensive. So whether the other counties will incur the additional cost to them, it's really uncertain to me. So I've asked our federal delegation, I've presented this information to them, is there a pathway for us to access federal FEMA funds directly without the state having to have the cumulative of 6.5 million? Also in our conversations, we could return to an era of earmarks and appropriations, if that is so. Hopefully, we could be considered at least partial recovery, if not all the recovery, from our federal government. So that's what we're working on privately as well and I wanted the folks, especially PGE, I wanted the folks listening out there to know that, that we're pressing pretty hard on that. Like I say, our citizens have been through a lot in 11 months with three emergency declarations and I just want them to know, continue to call us, continue to call the offices and anybody you can think of and let us know what your concerns are. Let us know what your needs are because we have people that can meet the needs. And Maria, I really want to thank you again for your offer of $75,000 for our nonprofits to help those most needy. I'm sure we have staff here that can coordinate that effort with you. And anything else, you know, you've given supplies, you've given flashlights, you've given food and blankets and all that kind of stuff needs to be acknowledged as well. Thank you for coming here today. I look forward of working with you, getting to know you and your staff better and this may be a real silver lining that comes out of this for us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much and thank you also for hosting so many of our crews in your community. They were really heartened by the show of support that many had in the communities and appreciate how challenging it was as we went days without power. So thank you.
Great, and thank you for your crew that came in today. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Well, Gary, that was a rather nice presentation today. You're up next.
Thank you. Continuing this line, we'll have an update on the ice storm weather impacts to Clackamas County and our Director of Disaster Management, Nancy Bush, will present this item. So Nancy, please come forward.
So thank you. Always have to remember which disaster I'm talking about. All right. So yeah, that was a great presentation by PGE. I appreciate them being here today and Chair for you inviting them. So for the ice storm, I'm just going to kind of repeat a few things that we probably heard earlier this morning, but as of 10:45 this morning on the PGE website, there are 117 that customers without power and there are five outages.
Say that again, only 117 are left without power.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to emphasize that. Thank you very much, Nancy.
Yes, 117. We're very happy to hear that. So we still have our resource centers going to be open today in Moala and Canby because we want to make sure that people who have the need in those communities, because a lot of the outages are still around Moala and Canby, yeah, Moala, Canby and Malino. And we want to make sure that they have access today. And then we are going to be leaving a lot of the emergency supplies with faith groups in those communities as well, so people can reach out to them over the weekend as well as us through the A D R C line.
Good.
But today, they will be closing, so they will not be open tomorrow. And at the height of this, we had five resource centers that were open. That included Canby, Moala, OSU Extension Center, Oregon City High School and West Lynn. And I just want to thank all of those partners because we could not pull that off without them. We also have Behavioral Health who actually sent out the Clackamas Safe and Strong Team supports as well at the Storm Resource Centers this week. And they were at the Moala Church of the Nazarene and also at the Canby Fairgrounds. And so they were available to those who needed some assistance there. As far as Human Services and the checks that we had for CCSO, they did about 1,700 face-to-face checks. And on top of that, they were able to, you know, talk to everyone, say, "What are your needs?" And that's whenever we had the National Guard go out. So the National Guard actually had a contact with 114 families, provided water, food, flashlights, you know, all the things we've been talking about, the hand warmers, those types of things. They were here for three days, the National Guard was. They demobilized on Tuesday evening and we were really fortunate to have them here and fortunate to have CCSO work with them as well. We had through the Human Services Branch and the Aging and Disabilities Resource Connection, through there we had 56 wellness checks. CCSO helped us with those. And we were also to, we were able to put 25 households in motels from Clackamas County. Our PIO team has been working really hard to make sure that our webpage is up to date. Sometimes I think we had to change it two or three times a day just for the winter storm. So they've been keeping on top of that and will continue to do that over the next few days as well. The debris removal, we have been talking to the cities and a lot of the cities have their own debris removal or they have a place for people to bring that. Our Department of Transportation Development is working on something for unincorporated. We know that this is not going away soon. We actually may have debris on the ground for quite some time just because as we've been talking about, there is a lot of debris. We had, let's see, I think that may be, may be the highlights. There's been, of course, a lot going on. We, as we close down the resource centers, we're bringing things back in here. We still have a lot of water that we're going to be able to push out to the communities, especially for those that were not on well, that are on wells. We had a lot of need for water, so we're going to continue to push that out because we do anticipate that they're probably going to have boil water orders or other things or even pressure issues as some of the water comes back on. So we're going to make sure that people have fresh water.
Very true, indeed.
Yeah. So I think that's the highlights.
One of those areas. One of those areas, that my father's house has power but no water because of that. And don't worry, they got it nailed through a family friend who works for PGE. Right?
Right.
Yes. It's nice to have friends in high places.
Yes, yes. But yeah, water is just a critical issue, and we realize that water can still be a problem, even as we have power come back on.
Nancy, could you please describe our plans for debris cleanup?
So we have some options that we're looking at. We were looking at maybe co-hosting with a city, but we've ran into a lot of issues there. So we may have a program. There's a couple of things going on. So there could be a program where we have a voucher system, where we can electronically give out vouchers, but we're still working on that with our finance department, as well as, you know, DTD is also trying to get some of that nailed down. And we're hoping that we can get that up and running very quickly. And then behind that, we will be talking more about, you know, do we have a site that people bring things to? Do we work with the different companies and just say, if we have people bring things here, we'll pay you for that load that comes in, et cetera? So those are the issues that are on the table. And I believe Dan Johnson's going to be talking about that with Administrator Spent and I.
Okay, you said vouchers to cities to help them pay?
Not cities, individuals.
Individuals?
Yeah, households.
Households, I see. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes. It's a very expensive endeavor, and it is not eligible for FEMA.
It's not eligible for FEMA?
Not for private cleanup. It is for public, but not for private.
So what about, is the right-of-way where the lines go? Because Clackamas County owns a lot of that right-of-way, and then we give easement agreements to any utility.
Yes.
So in those easements agreements, we still own it? Do we qualify for that?
Yes, that is public infrastructure.
So do we qualify for that if PGE does some of that debris removal as well, on the FEMA app?
So if PGE does it as a private company, they are not eligible. We cannot count their expenses.
How do we know, though? I mean, there's so much. How do we know who's doing what? You know, that's the rub, but we just need to get out there and do it, right?
No, and we are. I mean, obviously, we are.
I know we are, but...
And it is, it's extremely complicated. And even working with the cities, I mean, it's like, how do, you know, they're trying to, they're really trying to make sure they're keeping separate what is private that's coming in and what is public, because they, too, have to keep those things separated. So it's a struggle. I mean, and it's something, I mean, it's been a FEMA guidance forever, ever since I've been doing this job.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we will figure it out. We will figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Commissioner Savas has a sand race.
Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, a great conversation. I'm getting asked that question every day about where can I take my debris? So removal is one thing, but taking it somewhere is really probably the biggest challenge. And I don't know what the capacity is of, for example, the place near, two places near where I live would be McFarlane's, for example, and also South Station, Metro Station. So I don't know if they're overwhelmed and they've got capacity. So if there was a voucher system and we, you know, a citizen and unincorporated that's not in a city with debris removal program was eligible to take their stuff there, is, you know, do they have the capacity? And so that's one question. And the other question you could possibly address, Nancy, I know that in the event of a cascade, yeah, we have debris removal programs, significant ones, for significant damage. And this is a lot, and I don't know what scale that, you know, level is at currently or what that larger scale is. But it seems to me that we'll learn from this. But I think in a way, we probably need to, at least in the immediate, have an answer pretty soon, because there are a lot of people that need to clean up and take their stuff somewhere. So what we can do, I'd like to get some kind of a message out as soon as we have a remedy or a solution here and a plan, so people know where to go. And they're not stuck in a line trying to get in line for, at McFarlane's, for example, if they don't have the capacity. Do you have any information, anything you want to add to that, please?
Yes, so I know that DTD is working, if we did something like the voucher program, we would be looking at several places for people to take their debris. It isn't just like a couple of state, you know, places. And we would have to do some contracting with them as well. And there is a lot of debris, and it's not just the cost of picking it up or taking it somewhere, it's also the cost of getting rid of it. And there's not a lot of market for hog fuel. So, yeah, so I mean, it's a very complicated process, and it also is very expensive. But we are looking at more, you know, we're looking at several places where people would be able to take their debris if we do the voucher program.
Any other questions?
The only other thing I'll just tell folks, and, you know, a lot of people do composting, you know, I'm not going to take any of my debris anywhere. I usually run it through my chipper and compost it and so forth. So even though I have a lot, it's going to take me about two or three weeks to clean up my yard with all this stuff. But that is one way, at least environmentally. If people can have a place in their yard and maybe pile it in a way that's out of the way and convenient, and just kind of wait until there's a solution out there, maybe, as opposed to rushing in and trying to take it somewhere. So some moderation and some thought about this would be great, and some guidance from the county. If we, as soon as we have an answer, get that across our multimedia waves, our social media waves, and push that out to the community so they know what we're doing or what they can do.
Right. Yes, and we do want to emphasize that regardless of what we do and what programs that we put together, debris is going to be around for quite some time from the storm.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Thank you, Nancy, for that report.
Nancy, one quick thing. So the weather declaration expires March 1st, which is Monday. Do you feel the board needs to extend it?
Yes, thank you for that question. I think because of the debris issue, and we're still trying to work through that, and it is part of the emergency, we would like to see that extended for probably at least two more weeks, so we can get our debris contracting done.
So Stephen, how do we do this? How does the board do this?
We don't have the declaration in front of us.
We currently have a debris management emergency order in existence right now as a result of the wildfires. Do you want to include it under that one, or do you want this to be standalone, weather-related?
We could, we'd have to change the language of that one, I think, because it's only for a wildland fire, but it is all debris related, and I would be comfortable putting it in that one.
But I have a question about that. For our FEMA application, I do believe they need to be separate.
I don't know that they do.
We can keep it separate. It's not noticed for today, though.
Because I'm kind of dogged about getting some national help.
Yeah, to be on the safe side, we can keep them separate.
What we can do is we can draft one for the chair's signature later today, and the board can ratify it at next Thursday's board meeting.
Are commissioners okay with that?
That's what's for me.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go ahead and do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Thank you. The next update will also be from Nancy. It's the wildfire update. Nancy, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So the biggest news here for the wildland fire is the cleanup, which, of course, was going to be starting just before the ice storm started. So ODOT is still going to, working with us on when we're going to be starting with, especially personal property. And we still have the opportunity for those that have not signed a right-of-entry form, if they want their property cleaned up, you can work with the state in order to get that done and signed. Our long-term recovery group also did not be able to, was not able to meet because of the ice storm, but they are going to be coming back together again. This particular group was actually used also for the ice storm and to see if they would be able to help those that may not be able to clean up their own debris to do that. So we're working with that group and some of the CBOs that can help those that are underserved or unable to remove their own debris. We also have, we're going to be updating our county's 2018 Community Wildfire Protection Plan with the assistance from the Oregon Partnership and Disaster Resilience. The target date for that is October of '21, but we're getting that, of course, started now. And we have some grant dollars that we're going to be able to do that and build that and use everything from the after-action report and put it into that. And that is something that the entire Fire Defense, excuse me, the entire Fire Defense Board must be a part of. And so we're hoping that after this event, they're going to be very active in that process.
Right.
The after-action report has also been put on hold, because we were doing all of our interviews during the weeks of the ice storm. So unfortunately, that's going to be running a little bit later than we hope. But we're going to, hopefully, we can get back on that next week and get those rescheduled as well.
Because you don't have anything else to do, that's why.
No, no, not at all. So we also have the task order for Tetra Tech that is for Debris Field Liaison, and we have met with him this week. That is Frank Guthman, who's going to be here working with us. Interestingly enough, he just moved here from Florida, which we thought was a really interesting time to move here. He literally moved the first week of the ice storm.
Wow.
So we, of course, the county right-of-way trees, we have no activity to date there. The ODOT Arborist crews have to come in and mark those. And of course, that was because of the ice storm, they have not been able to do that yet. And the wildfire debris removal on Highway 224 is resuming after the, they have stopped because of the ice storm. So it remains closed and will, until they can get that all cleaned up there. And we still continue to work through social services, to work with the residents that were impacted by the wildfires, as well as the state has also been assisting with that as well. And that is the wildfire recovery summary.
Any questions, Christina?
Yep.
Any questions, Christina?
Oh, no.
By commissioners?
No, I'm sorry.
Any other questions, commissioners, for Nancy on that topic?
Any other commissioners? No.
Okay. And then the final update is COVID-19 updates, also presented by Nancy. And joining her is Philip Mason-Joyner, Public Health Director. He is on Zoom. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. And Philip, I will turn this one over to you.
Thank you, Nancy, and good morning, everyone. As usual, I do have a slideshow. Thank you, Christina. And I'll try to be brief with my remarks. I know you have a whole lot to accomplish today, and there's certainly a lot going on with the COVID response as well. Some good news to start, tomorrow, Clackamas County will move from high risk down to moderate. That's fantastic news, as case counts are decreasing. And folks have access to testing, but the demand is not very high. It's really available at this point for symptomatic folks, folks who have been in contact with someone with COVID. So we're seeing those numbers go down, while also test positivity staying low as well. So that's very good news. Next slide, please. So in terms of the change, becoming moderate risk, the most impacted are our local restaurants, fitness centers, gyms, and other entertainment establishments. Now they're able to operate at 50% capacity. So they had currently been the last two weeks at 25% capacity. And for the large facilities, which we have some in Clackamas County, it can go up to 100 people or less. So really, which other number is smallest is the one that businesses go for and need to follow. But this is good news. Next slide, please. Nationally, cases are going downward, too, and Oregon continues to do a very good job. On a somber note, we did hit the 500,000 or 500,000 deaths as a nation this week, as we get close to, here in Oregon, our first case, that, I guess, the anniversary of the first case in Oregon, is this upcoming Sunday, which was an employee at one of our local grade schools who was a Washington County resident. Next slide, please. Here's the case counts for the tri-county. Washington County is also moving to the moderate risk level on tomorrow, and Waltonoma County is remaining in the high-risk category. They're really close, but they're still in the high category for at least two more weeks. Next slide. And here is the visual representation of our case count since the beginning in Clackamas County. So you can see the large peak, the surge in cases we had in mid-November, and then it slowly, and now pretty rapidly, the last few weeks has gone down. So we're hopeful that as we continue to work really, really hard, getting vaccinations into folks' arms, and folks continue to pause the precautions, doing a good job on that front, we will continue to move forward. Next slide. Here is the tri-county hospital, capacity hospital beds, ICU beds in our region, which I know quite a few appreciate seeing and keeping track of. We have seen a little bit of an uptick on that front. Related to the ice storm, we were very busy. 911 call volume did increase. I really want to express my appreciation to our local fire agencies, to AMR, to the Sheriff's Office, who helped us with medically fragile folks who needed oxygen with their power out. We had folks delivering oxygen. We were working with the hospitals to try to reduce emergency departments use, and it was a great team effort to be able to meet those needs on the social services front. Next slide. And then, as cases go down, the hospitalizations of COVID patients is also continuing to go down. So I'll shift next and talk about vaccinations. Over 50,000 Clackamas County residents are now in process to get vaccinated for the two doses of the vaccine. This is focused still on Phase 1A populations. We have primarily, that's focused on folks who didn't initially get the vaccine that are getting access now, or homebound folks, adult foster homes, where we have some of our nurses actually going out into the community to provide vaccinations at their location, along with their caretakers. Educators are still in process. As a tri-county, we've had to do that the entire month of February, starting with the youngest grade levels, those teachers, those staff. And now we're focused on the, what we call wave number four, which has moved, we've been able to gradually move up to high schoolers. But we have a whole lot of educators, over 9,000 public and private educators in Clackamas County, along with all the daycare providers who are considered educators as well. And we are also focused on older adults and meeting demands for those populations to get access to appointments, too. On Monday, those who are 65 and older will be eligible for the vaccine. And then our understanding is on Friday, the state, the governor's office, will be announcing the next groups of individuals who will be eligible after those who are 65 and older, along with the timeframe. I don't have the specifics. It'll be announced tomorrow during the press conference at 11:00 a.m. Next slide, please. Appointments are an incredible demand, which, from the public health perspective, is great. You want to see. Folks want the vaccine, as we think it's a critical tool to move us forward and out of the pandemic. But this continues to be a scarce resource. I've been telling folks in public meetings in this forum frequently just about how many folks are eligible and how the supplies just don't meet that demand yet. I think one of the key messages for folks to know is that appointments are only opened on Mondays and Thursdays at 9:00 a.m. So I haven't heard yet how it's going, but I imagine it will be today just as busy as it was on Monday, where 5,000 appointments were released. And less than an hour, it was completely filled with appointments. The demand is just a lot. I know folks are frustrated with just the ability to access appointments. And while you're eligible, it doesn't mean you'll necessarily be able to get appointments right away. It will take a few weeks. It could take a couple of months before we're able to provide vaccines for everyone who is eligible. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the majority of the vaccines in our region are going to Dick Vention Center. And if someone has a mobility issue, when they go onto this website here, covidvaccine.org.gov, there's a chat feature where they'll ask you some questions. And if you have mobility concerns, you want to say yes when asked you that question. That will give you access to the drive-through at the airport. We're also locally, just so folks know, the last couple of weeks, the whole month of March, we anticipate at Clackamas County Public Health to be receiving 1,700 doses each week. We have a long... We have a long waitlist of folks who have been waiting for a few weeks to get access to appointment. So we have a clinic in Oregon City, in Sandy. We have partnered with a couple of the fire agencies in the Milwaukee, North Clackamas area, in Wilsonville. And then Cambie, we have our first event, we're doing our fairgrounds next week. So we're doing the best we can, we have plans, as I've mentioned in the past, just not enough vaccines. And now, some of our local pharmacies around the county at Costco, Fred Meyer, Safeway, and Health Mart, along with the couple of independent pharmacies, are now starting to get a couple hundred doses each week. And we are referring folks to there, you can go on to their, their websites as well, to build to access schedules, but again, the caveat being, those schedules get filled very, very quickly. Next slide, please. A couple of good news on the national vaccine manufacturing side. Pfizer is, has requested to the FDA to allow that their vaccine be stored with a regular freezer. Currently, it requires an ultra-cold freezer, which, you know, local clinics, pharmacies, here at the local health bar, we don't have those freezers, they're really only at hospitals. So if that changes where it can be used in a traditional freezer, that would be very, very helpful, that we would be able to receive the Pfizer vaccine locally in addition to the Moderna vaccine. And then the FDA is reviewing the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, which is a single-dose vaccine, on the 26th. So tomorrow, they will be doing their comprehensive, start their comprehensive review of that vaccine. And if that enters the market, that'll really be able to expedite this effort. And finally, before I open it up for questions, I do want to share that we have a call center that is available for folks who have technology issues. They can also statewide, you can call 211, but our local call center is 503-655-8224. That's, we're trying to promote that.
Philip, can you re, Philip, can you repeat that phone number again? Thank you.
And that is a good way that we can connect you to one of our local clinic options. It just is going to take quite a while before we're able to get to everyone that wants the vaccine.
Do we have any questions for Philip? Martha, you're up.
Yeah, I do. Hi, Philip, thanks for everything you do. I had a couple of questions, some of this have come from constituents. Actually, I had an email from one constituent who has tried to, she's in the 70-plus category. Every time she tries to get, it's scheduled through the state, it says it's in, at the very end, when they, she tries to get it through, she's consistently getting an error message. My understanding, and I wanted to check on this, is that that is because the system itself can only take 1,000 people at a crack? And if more people are trying to get into it, it doesn't go through, is that correct?
Yeah, there, of course, just like lots of websites, if there's a lot of folks at 9:00 a.m. rushing to it, it will get overwhelmed. And then it'll get to a point where, you know, the 5,000 appointments, they, they were taken. So, so, you know, after about a couple of hours, if you haven't been able to get access, it probably won't work. You don't need to try again the next opportunity, either next Monday or the next Thursday.
And the other, the other constituent question was a little, that I received the other day, was from, again, a person who's about to be eligible. And she is concerned about how they are actually tracking who is eligible, and if indeed there are folks who are not been eligible, who have been getting into the queue. And I couldn't answer that. And I don't know how Oregon is actually, I mean, do you have to show an ID? Do you have to show your age? Do you have to, you know, she's, she, this is all anecdotal, but, but she's pretty disturbed by it. So I was just kind of wondering what's going on with that, so.
Yeah, I am seeing, you know, nationally, definitely, there's been stories about folks claiming to be an educator or a healthcare worker who are not. It is, you know, we do ask for some identification. We also recognize that sometimes for some populations, asking for ID is a barrier. I think, you know, the folks who are the greeters, they try to do their best and try to encourage folks to be honest. But there is a bit of the honor system at play here, you know. I, I think in Oregon, we're, we're really trying to focus on those at highest risk and ask for patients for the rest of the population. And, you know, that, that is a concern, and there are systems in place to try to address that. But I would say it's definitely not perfect, there are some challenges around that issue. We would hope that folks would do the right thing.
I'm sorry I had to ask that, but she's been contacting me pretty regularly, so I figured I better go ahead. The other, last question I have is, I, I did see that you contracted with the fire districts. And in order for folks to get in the queue for that, they call the number 655-8224? How do they get access? I mean, they're out there, but, you know, where's the there, there, where you say, I'm eligible, here's my ID, here's my proof? You know?
Yeah.
How is that working?
So we're really trying to folks, focus on those populations that don't have access to transportation, that don't have the technology. And we do have lists from our different county programs. The state provides with lists, for example, Twelton Valley in Wilsonville has been doing a drive-through. They did, we provided them with 800 doses this week to provide daycare providers. And that's really important, because their work, they're, they're taking care of little ones during the day. So having that evening, weekend option, you know, for those groups is really important. And for, for that example, we had contact lists that the state early learning department was able to provide us with.
So essentially, unless the eligible person gets a call, don't contact, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out, you know, we do, if folks, again, do not have the ability to use the technology available to access the options in Portland, those are the folks that we want to reach.
Okay.
Folks who just are frustrated that they can't get the appointment, I understand, and it's really tough, and we want you to get an appointment, but that's going to be the best, the best option for you.
Okay, let's just still go through this.
A little patience, and in the weeks to come, you'll get your appointment.
Yeah, we're, I mean, because, but my concerns are opening up 65 on Monday, but I don't see anybody 65 and older getting this until the summer at this point. But, I mean, I don't know, I'm not in your position, but it just seems that, it's odd to me that we're opening up additional queues without, I mean, there doesn't seem to be the, either the supply chain for the, for the vaccination seems to be an issue. And/or it could also be the fact that, who do they have, do they have enough people trained to give the vaccines? I mean, I don't know what that is, or if it's a combination of both.
Yeah, I think, according to the health systems, and, you know, we have a lot of folks have reached out to volunteer, I think we have enough capacity on the staffing front right now to ramp up some, that will be okay. We are hearing from the state that with 65 plus, it will be until mid-April.
At mid-April?
Where the majority of folks will be able to, they'll be able to finish this process with the current folks who are eligible. Mid-April, right now is the goal statewide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Philip Mason Joyner?
Commissioner Savas has a sound raise.
Mr. Savas, you're up.
Yeah, Philip, thanks for your presentation this morning, and also last night at the Eagle Grove Community Council. Appreciate, you had some good questions there from the audience, as I recall. I want to just make sure that, you know, we are continuing to message, and I know that you're involved with our state officials as well, but I want to make sure that people don't relax as we move from, you know, moderate, or moderate risk, or from high-risk to moderate risk. And restaurants are even more, opening up that people don't feel the need to do the social distancing and wearing masks. And listening this morning on the national news with concerns about the variants and the unknown, we certainly don't want to go backwards, you know, we want to continue to glide path into opening and, and improving the safety and the health of everyone. So I'm just hoping that locally, at the, at the county level and the state level, we're continuing to push out that messaging, that we need to maintain that. And lastly, just a concern out there that should we go backwards, you know, the, just the concern about businesses or people not being optimistic and jumping in with both feet perhaps to open up, that we need to be concerned that, you know, it won't take much. I'm assuming that if our numbers go the wrong way, we're going to go back to high risk, right? And, and, and I hope that we don't ever go back to extreme risk. But I'm just, just concerned that we continue to, to take every precaution we can for everyone's benefit, including our business owners and, and our employees out there that are trying to, trying to stay employed and try to serve the public. So that's all I have for today, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Savas, I agree, and I'm, I'm very concerned as well. It is great news that schools are moving forward and businesses can expand their capacity. And diligence now, our, our behaviors, following those, those tried and true public health precautions are what we need to do even more now that things are opening up a little bit. So we want to enjoy the benefits of that, but our diligence around following precautions are important, so that way we don't have to go backwards.
Thank you. Is that it for Philip Mason Joyner?
Any more questions?
No more questions.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you, Nancy, we appreciate your presentation. Gary, what's up next?
Thank you, all right, we're moving on to two public hearings. The first public hearing is the five-year county sheriff's public safety local option levy. We have Clackamas County Sheriff Angie Brandonberg to present, and County Councilperson Stephen Madcor. And Stephen asked to kick it off, please, and then we'll introduce Angie.
Thank you, Gary, morning commissioners. What we have before you this morning is the first formal step on the life of a ballot measure, and that is the referral by this board to the clerk, where the clerk will publish it in the Oregonian, and it is the protest period. If folks have objections to the title, or the summary, or the question, they would raise it, and it would go to court after that. We have a resolution for the board's consideration, which would refer the sheriff's five-year local option levy to the voters through the clerk's office. And just real, in, in a nutshell, this is a continuation of, we currently have a levy, it's been in existence since 2006, and the sheriff and her command staff will get into the details. This would replace that one if passed, and it would increase it by 12 cents. It would be good for five years, this is going to go, if the board approves it, it would go on the November ballot.
May ballot, may ballot.
The May ballot, excuse me, yeah. And with that, Sheriff Brandonberg and her command staff can get into the details.
I have one question before we proceed, Stephen. Regarding procedure, would this be the last time this commission considers this referral? Do we have to come back and ratify anything else once it goes to the clerk?
Not for this one. This form would go to the clerk, and if there's no protest, then I would file another paperwork. It's a state election form stating that the protest period is over with no protests, and it's ready to go. Then it would go to the clerk, she would publish it in the voter's pamphlet, there would be articles for and against. In this resolution, it delegates authority to county council and the county administrator to sign the paperwork on behalf of the governing, governing body, to refer it to the clerk.
Thank you. And if there is a protest, what, what constitutes a protest, to bring it back?
Somebody could challenge the summary. It's supposed to be a factual, objective summary in the statement itself, if somebody felt that it was biased or inaccurate or misleading, or if they thought that the, that the caption was inconsistent with the intent of this measure itself. It would go to court, it's an expedited review, we've had these in the past, our office would defend it. And the court was, would usually, they don't throw it out, they reform it, is what the court would do.
Thank you very much.
I don't anticipate any of that happening, because we have a fair and objective statement here before you.
Great, thank you. Angie, go ahead.
Yeah, good morning, Sheriff Smith, Commissioners and County Administrator Schmidt. I'm Sheriff Angie Brandonberg. With me today is Under Sheriff Michael Copenhagen, and Chief Deputies Jenna Morrison and Jesse Ashby. We're here today for the public hearing on the public safety local option levy. Just a brief history, the current public safety local option levy funding expires at the end of this year. Voters have approved a renewal of this levy twice since its inception in 2006. This provides critical funding for 18 sheriff's office patrol deputies, 30 jail deputies, and 10 investigators. It also allows us to maintain 84 jail beds at the Clackamas County Jail. It allows us to continue our specialized drug enforcement team, designed to arrest drug traffickers and those involved in drug-related crimes, such as identity theft, property crimes, child abuse, and child neglect. In the 15 years of the public safety local option levy, voters have never been asked for an increase. If we asked voters to approve another status quo of this levy, a straight renewal, by the end of this five-year levy cycle, we will be unable to maintain 12 of those positions I mentioned. And that's about $2 million. So simply put, the cost of doing business since we started this levy has risen. So funding provided by this levy for the last 15 years is absolutely critical to meeting and serving the public safety needs of our community. And we find ourselves in a position where this dedicated funding is less effective, and it's no longer meeting the, the demands on our resources. Regular demands, and then you put pandemic, wildfire, ice storms, things that we have been experiencing, have certainly put a strain on our resources. In early January, we worked with a polling firm to determine the viability of a small increase to sustain the existing levy-funded positions. Voters polled showed only a 48% favorability in the status quo renewal. And that would maintain current property tax rate, but would decrease existing public safety services. Conversely, voters polled were supportive of protecting current public safety services and adding 27 full-time deputies detectives, open 26 mental health medical jail beds, adding two non-sworn internal affair investigators, and funding the implementation of a body-worn camera program. So at this point, this is our, our ask, we're asking the board to refer to the voters on the May 18th ballot, the option to main, for the voters, for the option to maintain and enhance the public safety local option levy by changing the tax rate from 24.8 cents to 36.8 cents per thousand of assessed value, an increase of 12 cents per thousand. This would equal $32.05 more per year for a median assessed value home in Clackamas County, which is 267,000. So we would be happy to take questions, I think, is that where we're, we're at here at this point?
Yes, we are in a public hearing phase of this, correct, Gary?
Yes, first questions from the board, and then you will open the public hearing.
Any questions for the sheriff or her staff regarding this?
Yes, Sheriff Brandonberg, good morning, and deputies chiefs and under sheriff. This, this levy is on the minds of the people of Clackamas County, it's important to them. I've talked to a lot of people over the last few weeks, since you were in here and talked to us initially about it. And the people of the county expect law and order 24/7/365. They never want to see this county look like our neighbor to the north. There were some people who advocated not renew the levy. I explained to them what the negative impact would be on the general fund if the levy wasn't extended. And so I got pretty much universal support after that, that it should be extended. Where I didn't get support is in the idea of increasing the rate at this time. And people I talked to, and I talked, I maybe got a consensus of maybe 90 people across the county on this, is all. But the comments I got, almost universally, was, Mark, after the last 12 months, isn't this the time to give us a break? And the people, to, to, to some of us, the rate increase might be a small amount. But the sentiment in the county is that it's a tax increase, and, and I, I got a lot of resentment from the people on it. So at this time, I believe that it should be renewed, but I have a hard time after my interaction with. should be renewed, but I have a hard time after my interaction with folks across the county to support the increase. I know that's hard. But if ever there was a time when we say no to more taxes, I think this is the time. Thank you very much, Sheriff Brandonberg.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. We have some people who would like to testify on this. We have one gen-
You open the public hearing, please.
Oh, excuse me.
Actually, Chair Smith, Commissioner Savas has his hand raised.
Mr. Savas.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Shaw. I too have been talking to some residents in the area. And my comforting, comforting words to some degree is number one is that, you know, we're giving the choice to the voters to decide whether or not this is something they want to approve. But more importantly, that the impacts, should this pass and that 12 cents or that 30 somewhat dollars per median household, that, that won't actually hit their, hit their taxes until November of next year, not this year. So that's about a year and, you know, 10, nine months away. So there is some time, and we anticipate the, or we're hopeful, obviously, can't predict the future with 100% accuracy, that the economy will be better. But the other voice that I also heard is that there is a, a concern out there, that a need for more law enforcement and more presence. And, you know, we know with the, the compression, so to speak, of cost outweighing revenue, that we can only maintain certain level of service with X amount of dollars. So I, I'm pleased, on one hand, that, you know, we have an opportunity here to, to improve that level of service. And that it is difficult. I mean, it is difficult. The financial stresses to a lot of our households are important. But it is also, we need to recognize that law enforcement is a, is a needed, a needed thing here in the county, and people generally support that, and that there is a choice. So I, I love to hear the comments today, and, and, but I just wanted to let people know that they're not going to see a bill on their ta, are not going to receive their tax bill until late next year. So with that, I will anxiously listen to the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I want to thank Angie, and I really want to thank Commissioner Savas for some of his words. In my experience being here as a commissioner, public safety has always been a priority of every citizen in this county. And oftentimes, what doesn't seem to pass, and perhaps rightly so, sometimes these regional initiatives that actually tax folks that perhaps in our county, they may not support. But they get saddled with some of that because of, of the regional nature. And what I would say about the sheriff's levy, that's not the case here. This is really directly for the people of Clackamas County. And the reason I've always supported it is because we're elected at large, and we support every piece of this county. So whether you're rural, urban, suburban, or wild, as we say up at the mountain, this goes for absolutely everybody in the county, and it has always had broad support. And I know people are suffering out there. But I honestly think that, given the work, and particularly in these last, this last 11 months with three emergencies, fundamentally, I would say to our citizens, our sheriff's office has been front and center in some of the most difficult times we've ever experienced, at least since I've been here, that this county has faced. I think they would be willing to, given the information and hearing directly from the people that keep them safe and healthy, and who went door to door the last few days to make sure that they were healthy and safe, that I, I think that they would potentially support this. And I hope, given the performance of our sheriff's office consistently, everything from, my gosh, I remember when we had the big issue at the town center, and we got national kudos for that. Our sheriff's office has gotten national kudos from the Department of Defense of how they treat and recruit veterans and people who come here, you know, to, to work for them. They've gotten a national recognition of how they work with child abuse, and how they work with sexual abuse cases and children who have been, you know, abused. I have a daughter who's a prosecutor, and that's what she works on. She was working on domestic violence, and now they've given her child abuse cases, you know. So I kind of hear from that. And, and I think, given the narrative that the department will have for what they've done, and how the work they've done in these, these emergencies and these catastrophes, I think they can make an excellent case for a bit more for what they need to maintain and enhance the services they deliver. Now, I'll be honest, I know I can always get hit on this because nobody likes to say, oh, you're going to raise our taxes. But there's some things for me, as an elected official, when I see an essential service that is going to need the additional revenue and to not only maintain a current service level, but to keep it there. I, I just, I'm going to, I would go there for that. And I'm okay taking the hit on that. People know I'm not a tax and spend type. I have spoken against certain things that have gotten me into trouble with some of my more, you know, some of my center-left colleagues, because I've concerned, been concerned about fairness to the county. But this is a fair and just way, and I think that our constituents, after what they've seen from the heroes that are employed by the sheriff's department, could go there. And I tell you, if I was to get on my, my soapbox, I would just really get everybody, I would get the folks you visited. And I think you need to get their stories and how safe they felt, and how safe they felt knowing you were out there doing the firework. So I, I would, I would be willing, I would be willing to, you know, kind of sacrifice, you know, get the ire from the public, I guess, at this point. It's okay. I'm used to it sometimes. So, but I, I think we ought to, this is one I think we really ought to move ahead with, folks.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. And we'll have another probably time to comment too. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. There's only one Commissioner left. Commissioner Fisher, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm really interested to hear from our constituents.
Thank you very much. With that in mind, I will now open the public hearing. And we'll call the first person up in the room. We'll call the people who show up personally first. That is Elvis Clark. You have three minutes, sir. Come up to the seat and state your name and your address and speak clearly into the microphone. Thank you.
Elvis Clark, I live in Milwaukee. Do I give my exact address, or?
That's okay.
Okay. Welcome the Commissioners and the Chair and our Sheriff here. I really respect her. And she was under a great, I thought, former Sheriff Craig Roberts. But I still, we have a lot of resource demands other than the police department. And here you're increasing the level of service, it seems like. And so there, I'm not denying that we want to maintain our existing police services, but it's probably somewhere in between what you've asked for, which is almost a 50% increase in the levy, and zero, I mean, just renewing it. So with that, I would like to point out, as the Commissioners have already pointed out, that we have, this would be adding to your cost of owning a home, or even for the property owner renting their home, renting their shelter. So adds to making the housing a little less affordable. It will take, businesses are going to be, some businesses are going to take years to recover from this last year's shutdown. So they don't, if they own their property, they're going to also face this extra cost. And also, I think the landscape for policing itself is changing with the legal legislation down in state capital, which might shift things. And we, so we don't maybe know as much right at this moment. We should know before we go along with this measure. And I looked at inflation and population, which is kind of a basic benchmark for need. And then you got about a 2.4% increase in inflation in the region, that the best I can get from BLS, or Bureau of Labor Statistics. And then you have a population growth, according to Clack, no, PSU, is 1.6% in Clackamas County. So that gives you about 4% need, just from that basic measure. And at the same time, I look at the property receipts within this, from this levy, the last five years, it's increased about nearly 5% a year. So there's, it seems like there's sufficient funds there, but I'm, I don't know the business of policing that well. I also consulted the Oregon Taxpayer Association, Chief Executive, and he concurred with my assessment that this is not really the best time to be going with this big of increase in the levy. But, so, I still, I think the voters might be a little bit more skeptical of it, given the history, recent history of Clackamas County voters is not really that favorable, the countywide measures, it seems like.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I really appreciate your comments today, and we'll take those under advisement.
Okay, thank you all. You're doing great jobs.
Thank you.
Now I'll ask Christina to moderate the Zoom portion of this meeting.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I do have our registered list, so I'm just going to go ahead and call on the people that were on our list. So first up is going to be Michael Vinker. Or, I'm sorry, Michelle. I read that completely wrong. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Chair Smith and Board of County Commissioners. And I am not sure why my, my picture isn't showing, but thank you for letting me have a moment of your time to weigh in on this important levy. I want to start with a disclaimer that I am here as an individual and not representing NAMI Clackamas. I'd like to touch on two pieces of the proposed sheriff's public safety levy. People with untreated mental illnesses are 16 times more likely to be shot in a police encounter than someone who either does not have a mental health issue, or who has their mental health under control. These numbers only increase if the person is black or brown. Body cameras will improve transparency and accountability for both the police and the public they are here to serve. It has been shown to improve that both officers and citizens improve their conduct when they know their behavior is being recorded. But there can be issues, including the invasion of individual privacy and the possible inadvertent disclosure of privileged or sensitive information, including medical, mental health, religious information, or mutual communications. Although I personally support the introduction of the body cameras, I want to encourage careful consideration of the policies and procedures around the implementation. And now I'd like to pivot to a portion of the levy that I feel most capable of addressing. I'm encouraged by the inclusion of mental health beds as part of the levy request. The number of people with mental illness in U.S. jails has reached crisis levels. In counties across the nation, there are more people with mental illnesses in jails than in psychiatric hospitals. In our own Clackamas County jail, approximately 67% of incarcerated population is on a mental health medication at any given time. Compare that to the 20% of our community that have a diagnosable mental health issue at any given year. Why are the numbers so disproportionate? And what can you, as leaders in Clackamas County, do to change that? Having mental health beds in the jail is important. Our Clackamas County jail needs someplace to safely house incarcerated community members experiencing symptoms of the mental illness. Too often, I get calls from distraught parents whose child has been placed in a medical isolation unit at the jail because they have nowhere else to put a beloved child who's experiencing symptoms of their mental health, when placement in the general population is deemed unsafe. Too often, those parents have related to me of the deterioration of their loved ones' health when they are in what they call solitary confinement. This type of treatment for anyone's sick child is untenable, yet it is currently all that we have. The proposed mental health beds, while not in answer to our problems, will at least be a step in the right direction. That being said, we cannot, you cannot divert your eyes from the real issue. Why is our jail taking the place of resources outside that system that could prevent our loved ones from being arrested in the first place? Investing your general funds into mental health and substance use, early identification and treatment, housing, food security, and other basic needs will help people with mental health issues stay out of our correction system. It will lend itself to creating public trust, growing a vibrant community, ensuring safe, healthy, and secure communities for those who live with mental issues and those who do not. Our jails are meant to be left, not meant to fill a hole.
Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate your comments. This, we're running late, so I'm going to have to limit the testimony for our three minutes. I'm going to give the sheriff an opportunity to address the issues that you raised regarding increasing the mental health beds in the jail.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vinker. We appreciate your comments. And, you know, we have had many conversations with you and with NAMI, although you're not here to represent NAMI. And we're looking, much looking forward to working with you and your organization in the future. We agree with you as well, that the jail should not be a place where some folks end up. And so I, I, I take heart that, that this board, that this sheriff's office would work with you to, to find alternate places and programs for folks. So thank you for your comments. We really appreciate that.
Christina, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Go ahead and move on to the next. It's Dan Kraus. Dan, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Dan Kraus. I retired about one year ago from the sheriff's office where I worked as a detective sergeant, and I've been both a detective sergeant and patrol sergeant. I want to address like kind of a personal aspect to the personal, to the personnel shortages that exist right now. And a lot of people are talking about continuing where we are. But when I started in 1995, we were, we had about one-third more deputies working the road than are working right now. And we've been suffering from these personnel shortages for an extended period of time, years. There's an impact to the patrol sergeant putting together that, that schedule every day, and knowing that you have to balance the impact that you're having on your employees with public safety, and the wear and tear that it has on employees to have them working long over time shifts. It's a very, it's, it grinds on your employees, and it creates a potential for problems when people are not working at peak capability that occurs when you are getting enough rest and enough time off and opportunities to train and to improve the quality of the services that are being delivered. And then the other part of this that is very significant is body cams. It is the national standard now. People expect it, and it's a way to rebuild trust with, with people when critical incidents occur. The sheriff's office has already proven itself through the in-car camera system that exists, that they can be careful stewards of people's information. And having those cameras go with the deputies into the scene and having contact with people is going to make a big difference. And I encourage you to support this levy and put through to the voters.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Go ahead and move on to the next, Esther Nelson. Esther, you have three minutes. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Esther, are you there?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for having me to speak with you all today. My name is Esther Nelson, and I'm the founder and CEO of Safety Compass. However, I'm representing myself today and not Safety Compass. Safety Compass is a nonprofit that provides advocacy services for victims and survivors of human trafficking here in Clackamas County. Additionally, I personally was raised in Clackamas County, graduated from Malala High School, and continue to call this county my home. I want to speak with you all today regarding my support for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Department levy. At Safety Compass, we work with some of the most vulnerable children and adults in our communities. People with very little access to avenues that are likely to lead them to safety. One of the few opportunities that we have as advocates to make contact with trafficked people is because of the assertive efforts of law enforcement action by the sheriff's department to seek out victims, conduct stings to intervene, and help these individuals get to safety so they can begin to make choices about their own healing in life. Our advocates at Safety Compass work with specialized detectives and collaborate with law enforcement teams doing intersectional work with the drug team, Clackamas County's Inner Agency Task Force, that focuses on high-level drug crimes and suppliers, who we know are also very often the same individuals who have some organized crime connection to traffickers. also very often the same individuals who have some organized crime connection to traffickers. Recent county data polling indicated that the issue is a priority for citizens of this county, and rightly so, as sex trafficking is a significant problem in Clackamas County. Since 2018, we have identified and served 335 unique individual trafficking cases here in Clackamas County, and 161 of those were minors. The vast majority of these individuals were domestic victims born and raised here in Clackamas County, referred to us by law enforcement. Clackamas County should be proud that it has built a model for human trafficking task forces that are seen around the state of Oregon as sort of the beacon on a hill. It's the most skilled investigative team doing a great level of collaboration. We simply lack the resources to be as proactive as we like to be. And without this proactive approach, we aren't able to identify victims. In order to help the most vulnerable in this community, it is imperative that we bolster the capacity of the sheriff's department. If it were not for law enforcement's approach to reaching the most controlled, abused, and dehumanized young people of our community, our ability to intervene would cease to exist. For what equates to be basically the cost of a Starbucks every other month, or approximately one coffee a morning for a week, we could do our part to ensure that the sheriff's department has the resources it needs. Please join me in advocating for survivors of human trafficking by supporting the sheriff's department levy.
Great, thank you, Esther. We'll go ahead and move on to the next, Cassie Wilson. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Cassie Wilson. I'm a resident of Boring. I'm here today to ask, deny the request to put the Clackamas Sheriff's Public Safety Levy on the ballot. When I think about what types of public safety we need more of in our county, increased or even currently maintained policing is not part of that vision. To me, public safety looks like funding, education, social services, affordable housing, and food security. It looks like preparedness for continued year-round climate disasters already impacting our community and expanded funding for climate change mitigation. It looks like funding programs similar to Portland Street Response or cahoots instead. It looks like creating public safety that doesn't just rely on our police and jails. We cannot continue to perpetuate harm that its origins and current iterations are rooted in white supremacy. Last June, our Board of Commissioners passed a resolution condemning violence and racism directed at black people and all people of color in response to worldwide protests after George Floyd's death. If this board up hopes values in that resolution, it will not ask voters to consider increasing funding for policing as we know it, and instead challenge itself to rethink the meaning of public safety for all people, not just the safety of a select few at the expense of others. If we're going to ask our community to add even more funding to one of the largest pieces of our county's budget, it cannot be to perpetuate systemic oppression, which is what this levy as presented would do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cassie. We'll go ahead and move on to our last caller, Melissa Earlbaum. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Smith and fellow commissioners. For the record, my name is Melissa Earlbaum, the Executive Director for Clackamas Women's Services, and I'm also a Clackamas County resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the Clackamas County, excuse me, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Public Safety Levy. For over 35 years, Clackamas Women's Services has served the community, providing services for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, elder abuse, stalking, and trafficking. During my 13-year tenure with the organization, the community has benefited from our robust partnership with the sheriff's office. Six years ago, CWS and the sheriff's office were cannon-pan with county commissioners and other leaders to open a Safe Place Family Justice Center. Since we've opened our doors, I have had the distinct honor of working day in and day out with the dedicated employees of the sheriff's office, including administrative staff, deputies, investigators, advocates, and various ranks of leadership. While partnerships between nonprofit, community-based providers and law enforcement are of significant importance to public safety and supporting victims on their pathway to healing, it is unfortunately rare to find the level of commitment to the values of deep-rooted collaboration that we have here in Clackamas County. I can attest firsthand to CCSO's steadfast commitment to serving our community and specifically in supporting the needs of victims. The Public Safety Levy is an integral part of this effort. Over the years since A Safe Place has been opened, CCSO has steadily increased their investment in personnel with special units with expertise needed to provide trauma-informed response to victims. The Public Safety Levy will address the critical gaps we see every day by adding detectives to combat some of our most egregious crimes in the community, such as child abuse, trafficking, and elder abuse. It also supports the need for more deputies to respond to calls, including domestic violence calls, which are statistically the most dangerous calls for law enforcement. I've witnessed the sheriff's office's commitment to continuous improvement and ensuring the best care for victims and their families. Under the leadership of Sheriff Brandonberg, I've had the utmost confidence that they will continue and that this levy will be an indispensable tool in that effort. When we can intervene in the cycle of violence with a multidisciplinary approach, we increase safety and reduce barriers for victims. Most importantly, it supports healing and interrupts the cycle from continuing to harm the community and the next generation. I'm proud of Clackamas County for our community's dedication to public safety and for our community's recognition that innovative partnerships between public safety, criminal justice systems, community-based services, and public health are critical to the well-being of victims and survivors. Clackamas County is a model for these partnerships, and the Public Safety Levy is a necessary resource to sustain this effort. We hope the commission and the voters will support this levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And I actually misspoke when I said that she was our last one. We do have DA John Wentworth as well that would like to give his testimony.
Thank you very much. Chair Smith, Board of Commissioners, County Administrator Schmidt. I am John Wentworth. I'm the District Attorney of Clackamas County. As you know, I ran for the position of District Attorney and won last May. And in my conversations with the public, I learned that public safety is critical to Clackamas County and the people who live here. It is a core function of our government. If you look at Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, the sense of safety is ahead of needs for friends and intimate relationships. It's that critical. You can't achieve that psychological need unless your basic needs of safety are met. We want to feel safe in our home. We want to feel safe in our parks while we're shopping, and we want to have safety for our children. And the sheriff's office is at the core of that feeling of safety. I had the opportunity to speak with one of our grand jury panels that finished up their service yesterday. And while I would be remiss not to mention that in their conversation with me, they expressed pride in the work that was done by the people in my office, by their professionalism and compassion. Those were, they're their words, not mine. They also sang the praises of the sheriff's deputies who testified before them and praised their professionalism and their compassion as well. That is the level of service that our sheriff's office provides to the citizens of Clackamas County, and I am proud of that as well. I know that excellence is important to Sheriff Brandonberg, and it's important to those of us who live in Clackamas County. That's why I'm asking that this board support the Public Safety Levy, giving the voters an opportunity to show their pride in the work that we do, the services that we provide, and to provide safety to our citizens. It is a relatively inexpensive raise in price to ensure that our basic needs are met. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today.
Thank you. And I do not see any other hands raised.
Thank you, Christina. I will close the public hearing on this and ask for a motion.
So I will move to approve the five-year County Sheriff's Public Safety Local Option Levy to be put on the May ballot, if there's a second for that.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
Well, I'd like to address Sheriff Brandonberg, if I could. My, just want, I appreciate the conversations we've had recently, and I know that our relationship, we, the county commission and the sheriff's office, is getting better and better as time goes. And as we approach the budget season, I'm encouraged by some of the actions that Sheriff Brandonberg took, you know, right out of the get-go, and that was to initiate, you know, an audit and seek efficiencies and so forth. So to that end, I feel rather confident from our conversation even yesterday that taking some extra budget steps and looking at more specific line item budgeting will be a product of our work in the future. And again, to identify areas where we can increase efficiencies. So I really would like to hear, you know, Sheriff Brandonberg maybe address that a little bit and hopefully get concurrence. But also, before I quit talking about anything, I want to just go out and just say that, you know, there is a lot of good work out there in law enforcement. And I do, we do recognize that, you know, across this country, that there have been some misdeeds and missteps by certain law enforcement officials or deputies or police officers around the country. But that should not be a reflection or a bad reflection upon all of the good work that's being done by some outstanding individuals with, that are very compassionate, very sensitive, and do great work every day protecting our communities. So I just want to just, number one, say that, and also thank our sheriff's office for their work this weekend, going door-to-door, and also during the forest fires, going door-to-door to make sure people are all right and getting people evacuated. So there's a critical role there, and I appreciate the earlier deputy who had mentioned that he's seen a decline in those resources out there on the street. And our citizens have recognized that as well. So thank you for your work. And Sheriff, if you could just address your efforts for the audience when it comes to budgeting and finding efficiencies, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Savas. I appreciate the kind words for our staff. They've been working extremely hard, especially this past year. And it has taken a toll on them, but they take great pride in serving our citizens of Clackamas County. And we are from the county. Many of our folks who went out and went door-to-door this past week were suffering the same with power outages and children at home, yet they come to work every single day to make lives better for the people that we serve. So I just wanted to say that. And as far as the financial aspects, and, you know, as you know, I took over as sheriff January 1st. I am committed to working with this board. I'm committed to working with Commissioner or County Administrator Schmidt, to the rest of the county, to serve our public the most efficient, most effective, most cost-effective way. And we are not afraid to take a hard look at inside the sheriff's office, to be transparent about that look. That's why I commissioned the Treasurer's Office to do a financial assessment of our financial health. And I, because I think it's important. It's important to show the public that we are using the public dollar to the best of our ability to be transparent about that. So we look forward to the upcoming budget and looking at, can we do things better? Can we spend money in different areas? And so we are committed to that. We're committed to this board of working with you all, and we are very excited about the future.
Sheriff, did you answer the budgeting questions? Maybe I blacked out on that about specifically line item budgeting. I don't know if you do that in your sheriff's department or not. Just kind of briefly touch on that.
Yes, I know we had, Commissioner Savas and I had talks about this yesterday with my staff, and we've had talks about that, I think, before you came on, is that we would love to sit down with you and go line item by line item. We've done that in the past when County Administrator Schmidt took over, when we were looking for efficiencies, and we actually were able to, you know, make some cost savings by doing that. We are committed to doing that. I know that the matter of how, the manner of how our budget is presented is driven by county staff and county budgeting, but we are more than happy to take anybody that would like to take a look at our budget, open up our books, and...
Thank you very much for answering that question. Any more comments? Commissioner Shoal?
Yes, Chair Smith. The, it's unfortunate that the audit of the sheriff's budget isn't done already because that would have given us an insight as to maybe some ways that the sheriff's department could shift around monies. You know, there's, I understand there's over 100 non-sworn civilian staff that are in the sheriff's department that aren't directly, their jobs aren't directly related to law enforcement. I don't know if that number is exactly right, but my point is this, is that when the audit is done, there should be a chance for the sheriff's department to look at ways that costs could be saved and maybe some jobs shifted around. And the other thing, too, is that if this levy is extended as at the current rate between when this kicks in and when it ends five years later, we should see a significant increase in assessed values of property, and so the money coming in should be significantly more than it is now. We've seen huge increases in property values in the last year, even with COVID. So anyway, that's something else to think about. And finally, I want to say I have tremendous respect for every member of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Department, and I want everybody to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shoal. We appreciate that. And so along with this, so I took over January 1st. We hit the ground running. I'm working my staff extremely hard to meet the deadlines that we have, which are aggressive deadlines. So I agree with you. It would be nice to have all this information ahead of time. What I can tell you is that I know that what we're asking for, well, a tax increase is never a good time. This is the minimum amount that I know that we need to continue our critical service of public safety. And so in addition to the financial assessment, we are also doing a very comprehensive staffing study, which will talk about those non-sworn members, our sworn members, are we using our staff efficiently, effectively? There may be some sworn positions that should not be sworn positions, that should be non-sworn positions, that would add to that 100-plus because it's more cost-effective. So we're looking at everything. You know, for me, my commitment is to do things better, to always achieve more, and to be transparent about that and show you what we're doing. So that's my commitment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Smith. Sheriff Brandonberg, thank you so much for your presentation and for being here. I also want to just state publicly that I've also appreciated all the conversations that we've had offline regarding this issue, regarding changes within the sheriff's office, regarding transparency. And I also appreciate the Sheriff Roberts and all the conversations we had on these issues and command staff, current and previous. I really feel like we've had a strong relationship with you. I wanted to address a couple, oh, first of all, I want to say thank you to Elvis Clark for coming to testify, not just today, but previously, really important for those perspectives and has given, you know, me a lot to think about. And I also want to address Cassie Wilson, who said that she was in opposition to this request, and it appeared to me that the reason being because we need to use dollars differently or not, and it's probably part of the defunding police and disinvesting. So Sheriff Brandonberg, I would just like to ask you, because I know that there is a strong effort regarding after the death of George Floyd, we've had these conversations. I've actually talked with the Peace Officers Association for more information just about the continual self-improvement regarding dismantling systemic racism and how this levy will help with that effort.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I appreciate that. I also appreciate Mr. Clark coming and testifying as well. So I think that part of this levy increase is surrounding body cameras, which is, for us, the ability to have more transparency, but also to show the good work that we do because we do fantastic work in Clackamas County. But it is a transparency piece. As retired Detective Sergeant Dan Kraus mentioned, it is a best practice. And so that is a quest that we really want to have for our citizens and for our officers, our deputies. And, you know, as far as, just a comment about defunding the police... And, you know, as far as, just a comment about defunding the police, I think this is the time that we need to lean in and fund the police. And funding and training is huge. Funding and recruiting and retaining the committed men and women of law enforcement. This is a time we, there will always be a need for law enforcement, and we need to have the folks who deserve to be wearing the badge and protecting the public. We should be investing in the men and women. So that's my short stint on defunding the police.
Yeah, thank you for that. Just a couple of comments, since I didn't comment early. I've been torn about this because I really hear what Elvis Clark is advocating and also the idea that we do a basic renewal as to where we are now and then ask in November for the increase. And so I've been kind of looking at that, given that we're in the middle of a pandemic. I'm concerned about any, just the perception of government overreaching or taking from our constituents, our taxpayers, at a time when there is tremendous struggle out there. But at the end of the day, I, it's like Sheriff Brandonberg, I trust you. I trust your analysis. I trust what you're telling us, and I don't feel that I'm in a position, or I should be in the position, to second guess what you're recommending.
We already have a.
And so, given that you are a duly elected official, and you are coming to us as your fellow electeds asking for this, I am inclined to support it in the spirit of collaboration and in respecting your position and what you have come to ask for.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Any other comments from commissioners? Christina, let's take a poll.
All right. Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Nay.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Chair votes no. Motion passes, 3-2. I'm going to ask if our commission wants to take a 10-minute recess, and then we will come back and finish the rest of the order of our business.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back from our 10-minute recess. Both commissioners online have returned as well.
They're, I see Commissioner Fisher.
Hi, Sonia.
Hi.
Haven't seen Commissioner Savis.
And Paul's back too?
Haven't seen his picture appear yet, but he's online.
Okay, Paul, thank you. We have returned. Gary, what's up next?
We have a second public hearing, which is approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. This is an increase in appropriations of $23,150,473,000, funding through the fund balance, federal and state operating grants, charge for services, and inter-fund transfers. Sandra Montoya is the budget manager, and she will present. Go ahead, please, Sandra.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Sandra Montoya. I'm the budget manager for Clackamas County, and this afternoon, we're asking for your consideration on this supplemental budget. And as our county administrator said, it totals $23,150,473, and it affects eight different funds. I'm going to start by just doing a very high-level summary of the changes that you see on the screen, and beyond that, I'm available to answer any questions. So item number one, and the numbers correspond to what you're seeing here on the left side of the screen, that left column. So number one is for the general fund, and it shifts 7.3 million from contingency to the special payment category. And this is the shift for bond funding for the C-800 radio project, which has progressed at an advanced rate in this last year. That's the primary change that is happening in the general fund. Items two, three, and five are all to recognize additional Corona aid relief and economic securities funding, so that's the cares funding. Those three items total 16.6 million, and they provide spending authority across three funds. And the remaining four recommended budget adjustments are needed for operational projections and just to stay in compliance with budget law. So with that, I am open to any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions from commissioners on this?
I do not see any answers on Zoom.
I see nothing, Gary.
Nope.
Gary, so what's up next?
Have you opened the public hearing, please?
Yes, we'll open the public hearing. I think I lost my place. I beg your pardon. Commissioners already asked questions. Now Christina, do we have anybody on Zoom who wants to talk about this?
We do not have any registered public testimony for this matter.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Chair Smith, I move for the approval of a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020-2021.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Shoal and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
All right. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, and the motion passes, 5-0. Gary, what's up?
Thank you, Sandra. Next is the consent agenda, and Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Yes, I will go ahead and share that. For health, housing, and human services, number one is approval of the area plan for years 2021 through 2025, received 1.8 million in OAA funding and 1 million in OPI funding. Number two is approval of a subrecipient professional services agreement with Outside Inn Incorporated for HIV testing and counseling services. The maximum value of this agreement is $22,477, funded through the State of Oregon Health Authority. No general funds are involved. Number three, approval of a change order, number four, between Clackamas County and Ancrom Mosian Associated Architect Incorporated for the Sandy Health Clinic Project. This amendment would add $6,350 for a total contract value of 282,601, funded through the Health Centers Fund. No general funds are involved. Number four, approval of an amendment, number nine, to agreement number 7462, a revenue agreement with Care Organ for Behavioral Health in Primary Care. This is for payment for services furnished to persons enrolled in OHP. No general funds are involved. Number five, an approval of an intergovernmental agreement, number one, amendment number one, excuse me, with Clackamas County Circuit Court to provide protective order and support services. This amendment will add $79,156 for a total contract value of $152,212, funded through the U.S. Department of Justice. No general funds are involved. Number six, of approval of amendment number 17 to the IGA with the State of Oregon acting by and through the OHA for operation as LPHA. Contract increased by 1.6, $1,675,709, bringing maximum value to $13,405,871, with funding through the state. No general funds are involved. Number seven, approval to apply for a Workforce Innovative and Opportunity Act, Adult and Dislocated Worker Services Grant, $170,000, with funding through the U.S. Department of Justice. No general funds are involved. Number eight, approval of federal subrecipient grant amendment number one, with Northwest Family Services to expand youth opioid prevention and early screening to include Sandy and Estecada. Amendment number one adds $114,360.51 for a total award of $189,360.51. And it says with funding through, and I've missed that part, for elected officials. Number one is a request by Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to accept a grant from Oregon Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime activities related to self-safety belt enforcement. The total grant is $15,000, coming from Oregon Department of Transportation. Number two is a request from the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to accept a grant from Oregon Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime activities related to speed enforcement. This total grant is $20,000, coming from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Number three is approval of a ORMAP, the Oregon MAP, intergovernmental agreement contract number DOR 31020, between the Clackamas County Assessors Office and the Oregon Department of Revenue for the administration of the ADVOLORM property tax system. Semi-annual IGA contract is $35,000 and is funding through the State of Oregon. The A&amp;T Department dedicates an additional $10,000 annually to support the conversion of MAPs through quality control, new plat maintenance, plat and deed research, and project management. Under Technology Services, an approval of a service level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Astound Broadband LLC, revenue fee of $4,250 and a recurring annual lease fee of $3,060. Under Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority for Behavioral Rehabilitation Services reimbursements. Estimated maximum annual net revenue to Clackamas County is $273,049. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Willamette National Cemetery to provide work crew services from February 1st, 2021 through January 31st, 2022. Revenue in the amount of $27,000 from the Willamette National Cemetery, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Christina. Does any commissioner wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Commissioner Shoal and seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, the motion passes, 5-0. The board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the next consent agenda.
Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Of course. For the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of addendum to lease agreement of Clackamas Elementary School Buildings and Grounds between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Cascade Heights Charter School. The lease agreement will have a revenue of $127,629 and will increase 5% annually. And that's your consent agenda.
Does any commissioner wish to remove anything from this? It's only one. I assume not. Can I have a motion?
Chair Smith, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Savis has made the motion, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded. Any further discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, the motion passes. The board will adjourn as the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District and convene as the Water Environment Service Board for the next consent agenda.
Christina, would you please read the consent agenda by title only?
Of course. For Water Environment Services, approval of a contract between Water Environment Services and West Consultants Incorporated for the Stream Flow and Precipitation Monitoring Project, contract total of $812,220.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item from that consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I move for approval. I move we approve the consent agenda.
A move by Commissioner Savis and seconded by Commissioner Shoal. Any discussion? Christina, please call the poll.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
And Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Shoal?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, the motion is approved. The board will adjourn as the Water Environment Services and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Up next is public communication. I will call for statements from the public regarding issues relating to county government. It is the intention that this portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county codes. Today, I think that we've agreed that we're going to have our testimony be for two minutes because we're going long, and it is already 12:45. With that in mind, please comment, shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting. I will take the first people who are in the room, and do I have a card? I do have a card. Yee-haw. We have people, real people. I so like that. Lori Zold, would you like to come up, please? State your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners and Madam, and Chairwoman Smith, Madam Chair. My name is Lori Zold. I live on Hill Road in Milwaukee. Like many of our neighbors, the recent ice storm caused us to be, to lose power for eight days. We had no heat, no way to cook, and no functional sewer system because our sewer system requires a pump to get our wastewater to the main. We lost approximately $300 in food, had to have our kids, one of which is an active member of the Oregon National Guard, stay with their godmother so they could be warm, and my business lost about $2,000 in revenue. While watching last week's commissioner meeting, I was horrified to discover that the county had 75 hotel rooms that were mostly empty, seemingly because nobody knew about them. Meanwhile, I couldn't flush my toilet. This is one example of failure by the county. The resource numbers weren't published till day five, and the National Guard wasn't deployed to serve the rural community until day eight. The resources list published on the website was incorrect or outdated. When I asked for resources for hot food on the county Facebook page, I was given a link to the Oregon Food Bank. No hot food options were ever given. Warming centers were available, but not at night when people were the coldest. The county's very limited response included referring people to 211 and posing for a photo op handing out food boxes. The operator at 211 I talked to even indicated she wished the county would stop sending people there because they didn't have the resources that everybody thought they did. The county instead, which should have been leading the resource coordination, instead relied on the neighbor helping neighbor approach that left us victims feeling lost, confused, and literally out in the cold. Currently, I have to shorten this. I'm very concerned that the county does not have an effective disaster plan. The database of resources is woefully out of date and communication is lacking. I'm concerned for future disasters like a large earthquake.
Lori, your comments, I think, are very good today, and I appreciate you coming forward and talking to us about this. I agree with them wholeheartedly, and that is why I started a new committee for us commissioners called the Disaster Management Coalition Groups, of which I would like you to become a part of.
Happy to.
And my goal in that is to establish community-based volunteer groups all over the county. We had, what, five or six resource centers set up in the county to try to provide for this. The county was slow on communications. Our communication systems were down for three days, just like everybody else's. We've learned from this. We had a backup generator. Our backup generator failed in order to give communication. So people couldn't get timely information of our website because we couldn't get it on our website. And that is, you know, we all accept that responsibility for that failed system. We are working toward establishing plans and moving forward. I'm part of the regional. I'm part of the regional disaster operations preparedness groups. It's a five-county coalition of elected leaders who serve on that. I also am going to be starting my own FEMA training. I'm already certified FEMA from the last time I was on the Commission, but I'm going to be getting more FEMA training and working with Nancy Bush, our Emergency Management Director, on this. That's all I can tell you right now, and I feel for you. I have your information here and regarding your lost food and business. I don't know if we can do anything about that at all. I'll just pass this on. But Gary, is there any other comments you can make on this?
Yes. First, I'm very, very sorry for the suffering you and your family have done. My parents live right where you live too, and they were in the same position. We do our very best. We could always do better. I acknowledge that as the leader of our staff. And so, we will do better. I do though want to acknowledge our staff did their very, very best, and they worked 24 hours a day, the entire time, of which many of them also lost their power. So, we did our very best, and I know it's, it's not an excuse, but rather, we'll do better next time. So, thank you for your feedback.
Additionally, what people probably don't know is the weekend, the first weekend of this storm, we had county staff who normally don't work, you know, Saturday and Sunday, out delivering battery packs and oxygen machines to people who were on oxygen because they had run out, or they didn't have electricity to make those work. So, they were really scrambling to do the best, best we could on this. I chalk this up to a learning experience. This county, as you know, has had three declared emergencies in 11 months. We're really sucking on fumes. I hope we get a break from this as we move forward. I've also asked our federal delegation to help with direct payments to the county for any federal FEMA or other federal monies to enhance our systems so we can communicate with our people and deliver services faster. Is there anybody else in the queue?
Commissioner Fisher has her hand up.
Commissioner Fisher, go for it.
Thank you. Chair Smith, given, I know it's the lateness of the hour, but I think that if we're going to take the time to comment on public communication, we should at least allow our public to have the three minutes in communication. I don't agree that we should be limiting that today. That being said, I am curious. I understood that we, our communications were not down for three days, but for about a day, and I would like our county administrator to confirm any misunderstanding that I may have had, and just to make sure we have the correct information.
Yes, so, so no county generators failed, but our email server failed because of the, the exhaust vent froze to the outside, which caused our county emails and phones to be out for about 11 to 12 hours on the last, the Saturday when this first happened. That's where we had the breakdown. The county email, website, and telephones were out for about 12 hours, but it was restored right after that.
Thank you, Gary. I stand corrected. When it comes to commenting on people's lives, I will take whatever time as chair is necessary to acknowledge that. Thank you very much, Ms. Zold, for coming forward. Next up.
All right, we have our list online, so I will just go ahead and start with that. Chris Waller, go ahead and unmute yourself, and we have two minutes.
According to your webpage at www.clackamasus/countyadmin/spirit, these are the Clackamas County core values: service, professionalism, integrity, respect, and trust. Let's talk about them. Service: In all our actions, we advance the needs of the community and the individuals we serve. Are the needs of our communities advanced when a Commissioner censured for his disparaging comments is made liaison for groups dealing with law enforcement and public safety? Does this show communities of color that we truly are listening to their needs? Professionalism: In all our actions, we are the face of Clackamas County. Should someone who is the face of Clackamas County be on record as stating the wrong people were intentionally encouraged to come to America? How about, "We are adults. We do not need to be treated like second-rate slaves." These three go together: integrity, individual accountability, and trust. In all our actions, we right our wrongs in good faith. Commissioner Scholl claimed he made his Facebook post because he was targeting Muslim agents of conflict. How does this explain his dozens of posts that targeted and demonized immigrants, people of color, trans people, and Muslims that were simply shopping at the mall? Mr. Scholl has not righted his wrongs. Respect: In all our actions, we communicate in a positive and courteous manner. How is shouting out propaganda at a Women for Trump rally courteous? How is stoking the partisan divide on Fox News positive? How does stating, "I promise after you deal with me, you will have sleepless nights," encourage respect? Commissioners, some of you have a way to go to live up to your core values. Recall MarkScholl.com, tuttiwatch.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Want to move on to the next? It's Les Poole. Les, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have two minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. I'll be quick. I've spoken a couple times recently, and I've asked a question, and the reason that I'm asking it is that I think we need to be very clear about the difference between what someone's done in the past and what they've done as an elected official. And regardless of anyone's interpretations about anything Mr. Scholl ever wrote, it seems clear that, over and over, we're hearing things that are implied offenses that he has committed as a Commissioner. So, it's time for us to get real here. If the plan, the political plan is to eliminate his participation by defunding his, by defunding his salary, and certainly by recalling him, which could, a recall could be launched six months after he took office. If that's indeed the plan, I would caution those involved to make sure that when they show up here, they're accurate in what they're saying, and that someone can be recalled for what they've done in office. I can't, I can't come in and launch a recall on someone because I'm offended. So, we are playing with some fire here, and I think it's very important that what gets said here is not exaggerated or distorted, and that we continue with a nonpartisan forum. With regards to the vehicle fee, if I could very quickly, the vehicle registration fee, much like the sheriff's budget, or supplemental budget, as I think it was called, but ask for more money, that, that really needs to be frozen.
Thank you, Les. Thank you, Les. I appreciate it very much.
Okay, all right. Now, could we just get that for a public discussion down the road in a few weeks?
Thank you, Les.
Thank you.
Thank you, Les. We'll go ahead and move on to the next. We have Bill Wer. Bill, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. I know that you're grappling with how to allow public comment and still be able to complete the agenda items for the day. For now, you've installed a signup protocol that requires two hours' notice. In addition, public comment is near the end of the meeting. These measures tend to discourage public comment and give an impression that you place public comment as having less value. It's understandable that you feel an obligation to complete the agenda before you, but you also have a number of citizens setting aside their time to speak to you about their concerns. The dilemma in having an uptick in public comments is of your own making. The haste in which you proceeded to condemn Commissioner Scholl apparently did not include forethought of consequences. Your fervor to get rid of Commissioner Scholl has not only drawn out citizens concerned with his postings prior to assuming office, but others questioning the conduct of the Commission as a whole. I don't remember any Commissioner during a BCC meeting campaigning to get rid of another Commissioner, or using a budget committee to strip a Commissioner of his salary as Commissioner. When did we ever have almost all taxpayer-paid county department heads en masse take an ideological position and turn their departments into political war rooms? And doing that with such alacrity? I believe it's the duty of this Commission to hear its constituents. Amendment one of the Constitution includes the right of people to petition the government for the redress of grievances, but you're the ones that determine time, matter, and place for public comment. I would recommend as a starting point, you consider public comment to, one, require registration, but a cutoff enrollment at 10:00 AM by the start of the meeting. Number two, place public comment on the agenda at or near the start of the meeting after emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Wer. I appreciate your comments. I will remind people listening to this that public comment always used to be at the end of meeting agendas, and it's just in maybe the last, I don't know, Gary, what, eight, 10 years that it was moved up front. And I will remind, this is the only opportunity that the Commission gets to do their official business as mandated by Oregon revised statutes and county codes. However, public comment is always taken in the form of email, and with our very elaborate and sophisticated social media, people say whatever they want on this. But yet, you are able to comment fully today, Mr. Wer, and I do appreciate that. Continue.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. It looks like we have, Commissioner Fisher has her hand raised.
Just a quick comment. Bill, would you mind emailing the rest of your testimony, because I'm interested in your recommendations?
And we will go ahead and move on to the next. We have Jamie Mathis. Jamie, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have two minutes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I am from Milwaukee, and I've been a part of this community my entire life, and I'm sure many, if not all of you, could say the same thing. We share a love of place and a pride in the beauty and abundance of the lands that we call home. Over the last year, our community has broadened its definition of who qualifies as a community member to include the trees that have been ravaged by fire and ice, the microbiome that carries viruses like COVID-19 around the globe, and the wind that's shaken us to our roots and demanded that we rethink what it means to respectfully exist together. One thing is clear: We depend on each other to thrive. We depend on good infrastructure to function and rebound quickly when we're faced with extreme feedback from our weather systems. We depend on healthy relationships with our neighbors and environment to add a layer of resilience when we can't access goods and services as normal. And we depend on our leaders to be part of our web that holds a light for us all when change comes quickly and unexpectedly. We all recognize that being a good leader is intense work, that democracy is messy work, and it must also be transparent work so that the community can fully participate in creating solutions that are good for all members. Deep democracy requires relationships and integrity on the individual level as well as the communal level. In a grounded democracy at the county level, Mark Scholl would have been tended to with love and care after returning from battle, until his mind and spirit were healed from the trauma and brutality of war, instead of being left to wander through the community wounded and always on guard. Our democracy has failed Mark Scholl on an individual level. Now, his wounds are bleeding into our community through his attempts to cope with the unseen wounds of war. It is grief that brings us to testify week after week because we see his pain, and the pain that his pain causes so many of our community members. But we do not want to see you abandoned and kicked to the curb, Mark. We want to see you healed and part of our community as a whole person.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. I appreciate your testimony today. Christine, up next.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. We have Yvonne Lazarus. Yvonne, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have two minutes.
The first thing that I want to say is, I agree with everything that Les Poole said, so I can get that out there to you guys. I certainly don't want another registration fee. And the next thing I'm going to say, because I don't have the time, when the lights went out in Clackamas, I very much appreciated PGE and all the other people who helped. Being alignment is a very, very dangerous job, and you'll see me again, so I'm just going to say goodbye at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Thank you, Yvonne. Go ahead and move on to the next. Lauren? Go ahead and allow you to talk. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have two minutes.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. My name is Lauren Quarter, and I'm a property owner and blueberry farmer. I live in Boring within unincorporated East Clackamas County near the Sandy River. I am also the Secretary of the Cottrell Community Planning Organization. My family members, my family neighbors the proposed site for the city of Portland's $1 billion water filtration project set for construction in unincorporated East Multnomah County along the Clackamas County line. This project is in response to a federal mandate to treat drinking water due to cryptosporidium. In 2018, the city chose the most expensive treatment option at the most expensive location. Because the city has proposed to build this facility off the main conduit, the proposed pipelines cross through Clackamas County. These pipelines will traverse through private properties, streams that feed into the sandy, and across high-value agricultural land, an Oregon-designated critical habitat for 22 bird and wildlife species. According to Metro's urban growth plan, the proposed site in East Multnomah County and the pipeline route in Clackamas County is within a rural reserve. Our rural reserve designation was established in 2011 and is supposed to be protected for 50 years. Yet, the city of Portland is moving forward with this urban industrial project within our residential agricultural community. Although the city does not have land use approval to build at the proposed site, the Water Bureau has been wreaking havoc on our community for over two years. Next Monday, March 1st, they plan to complete geologic drilling across 60 sites, including 24 sites on farmland and private properties in Clackamas County. This will be drilling up to 270 feet with sustained sounds in the 80 decibel range, beyond health standards and county noise ordinance. Many of us have already experienced drilling in 2019, and one neighbor lost their well. Sound recordings in 2019 documented more than three parts.
Thank you, Lauren. Lauren, can you submit the rest of your testimony through the email portal provided? We would appreciate it. Thank you very much. This, I will close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move
Next is County Administrator Update, and that's me. First, Commissioners, under the COVID-19 Emergency Declaration 2020-14, I signed two contracts on your behalf, and I would like to share them with you and seek your ratification of those. Both refer to disaster management. The first was a memorandum of agreement between Clackamas County and the North Clackamas School District for emergency disaster-related use of North Clackamas School District facilities. In this case, the facilities will be used for COVID-19 vaccinations through drive-through community clinics. There is no monetary value for the, this agreement. However, the county will pay for any expenses to ensure facilities are returned to their pre-use condition. Funding will come from CARES Act funding. No general funds are involved. I signed that memorandum on February 24th, which was yesterday. Also, yesterday, February 24th, I signed an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Fire District Number One for COVID-19 vaccine administration through community clinics. The IGA value is $150,000 and is funded through state CARES Act allocations via the local public health authority. No general funds are involved. So, Commissioners, I am seeking your ratification of both of those agreements I signed on your
Do I hear a motion?
I move to ratify.
I need to ratify those approvals.
I have a motion from Commissioner Savis and a second from Commissioner Fisher. Any further discussions on this? Hearing none, Christina, would you call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
And Chair Smith?
Aye, and the motion is approved.
That was my report for today. It's now Commissioner Communications Chair.
Up first today is Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith. This, I'm going to make this quick, but I've been doing quite a bit of reflection since our meeting on Monday when we did the liaison assignments. I appreciated Chair Smith, your effort to respond to concerns of our constituents regarding Mark Scholl being appointed as a liaison. I want to also thank my fellow colleagues for the... I want to also thank my fellow colleagues for the statement that we made back on January 14th in the censure where we reaffirmed Clackamas County's equity, diversity, and inclusion values, and where we also stated some things within that statement about Mark Scholl's comments being derogatory, offensive, insensitive, and racist, and that Commissioner Scholl's statements imputed a reputation of racist, sexist religious insensitivity and intolerance. And then lastly, whereas Commissioner Scholl's statements and opinions are detrimental to the trust and confidence of the residents of Clackamas County and the Board of Commissioners' ability to ensure the delivery of services to the county's residents, and then wherein we all asked for his immediate resignation. So on Monday, we, as a board, voted to make him the liaison to many important community groups. And since then, as I've reflected, I am going to be asking that my vote be changed to a no until such time that Commissioner Scholl demonstrates that he understands the harm that his comments on his personal Facebook page has caused our community, and also his comments that he has made as a county commissioner in our meetings have caused our community and the embarrassment. Until such time, I cannot support Mark Scholl being an official liaison and voice to Clackamas County. I don't know how my fellow Commissioners feel about this. I'm not going to ask for a discussion right now. I would welcome Gary Schmidt putting this on our issues agenda for Tuesday so that my fellow Commissioners can weigh in at that time.
Gary, I don't think that we voted on that, did we?
Yes.
We did vote on that?
Yes.
Oh, I stand corrected. We'll have to take that up at whatever the appropriate time is.
Add it to issues next Tuesday that the board wants to discuss.
And thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I'm going to bring up a few slides here. Christina, which one's coming up first?
It is. Sorry, one second. I will pull it up, and you can see it. There we go.
Okay. This is about the National Association of Counties, and I wanted to let folks know. I know that Chair Smith and Commissioner Savas are really going to be heading out, or actually not heading out, they'll be zooming in to our federal delegation for all the work they're doing. But what I have found out at the national level, that the National Association has applauded the U.S. House Oversight and Reform Committee's passage of the state and local coronavirus fiscal recovery funds, part of the next potential round of COVID-19 federal relief, and urges the full House and the Senate to pass the bill as quickly as possible. This bill includes $350 million in critical aid to state, local, and territorial governments, including, and this floored me, Chair, evidently, we as Clackamas County, the National Association, has calculated that if this bill stands as it is now, that we as a county would receive $82 million, close to $82 million in COVID relief aid. And what would we use it for? It would be, you know, $3.6 million to keep county employees safe and healthy, invest in our small businesses, and the health of all of our residents, and really making this something that local governments across the nation, counties, municipalities, the people that do on-the-ground work with all of our heroes, we saw some of them today with our sheriff's office, that we have the funding we need to really recover from this pandemic. So I want to thank the National Association. Evidently, we have been working on a pandemic response now for close to a year. We're doing very well, now moving to a moderate state where, you know, position so we can actually open up a little bit more. But the National Association has asked us all as counties across the United States to help support this and help our heroes. Okay, there we go. That's NICO. Oh, and here's more. 330,000 law enforcement officers in our communities, local roads, bridges, and transit systems, first responders nationwide, and all the county workers who care for patients at 1,000 hospitals nationwide. This is the kind of thing that these dollars will do for Clackamas County as well as other counties. Nice job with the slides, right? Okay. Thank you. All right. Second slide is really quickly. It's Journey Down the Clackamas. It's a series of webinars. There are two webinars each month, and basically, they are free. They are in the afternoon as well as the evening, but we're looking at the evening ones for folks who work. It covers wide-ranging topics related to the river and our ecosystem. The first one is coming up this first week in March, March 9th, Water Introduction to the Clackamas River Watershed Basin, introduction of the basin, stakeholders and users, and how you can get involved. Please check it out and register at the website on your screen, www.clackamusriver.org. Have we got it up for the screen? Or?
I don't have it up on the screen.
Oh, we don't? I'll repeat it one more time. www.clackamusriver.org. This is going to be a great year-long seminar. And finally, colleagues, Commissioner Fisher and I have worked on a op-ed together. We've collaborated on how the pandemic has been impacting children. I think it's just been sent into Pamplin Media, Commissioners, I wanted to give everyone a heads up that that's coming, and we will be doing a listening session about children in our county together. So I'm looking forward to that, Commissioner Fisher.
I think that's excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Up next, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, Chair. On Tuesday afternoon, Commissioner Schrader and I had a Zoom call with Governor Brown, and she inquired as to how we're doing in the county. A couple of things came up from that call. One is a need for reduction of fuel and sustained harvest of the forests. And then the next thing was a need for a plan to train, coordinate cities' CPOs to be ready for the next emergency. Now, I've got a couple paragraphs of information and ideas for you. I'm not going to share them today because of time, but I'll get those to you.
That's fine. If you want to save them, type them up and read them in next week. That would be great.
Sure. And then one more, one more point for the small business owners in Clackamas County with 20 employees or less. The Small Business Administration will offer Paycheck Protection Program loans available February 24th through 10 March. So please get on www.sba.gov and look at it and see if your business will be eligible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Savas, you're up next.
Yes. I do want to thank everyone who helped, volunteered, and contributed last week with response to the ice storm that we had. We went door-to-door in Oregon City, our warmer shelters out in Camby. I also visited that one as well to see the volunteers. Not only that, but people even bringing in more supplies and food out of the blue. So that was really refreshing to see that much community support. And I think we have a lot to learn from each of these events, and I think that is a normal course, a normal course to expect. I think we can expect that there's always going to be process improvements, especially in emergencies. And I appreciate everyone's comments and criticisms, and we will learn from those. And if we don't, that's on us, but we should. Honored to be in Washington, D.C. virtually this week. The Chair and I were advocating for, on behalf of Clackamas County, for a number of things. Commissioner Schrader, you mentioned the $82 million share of COVID relief that Clackamas County would see, and that looks like it's making some good progress. And that looks to be forming up with direct payments to the counties, which is a big improvement. Also, we're able to share our concerns about the Loma Falls locks, getting those up and running, critical infrastructure such as I-205 and the Sunrise Gateway Project, and also our forest fire efforts and our forest management efforts as well. I know I'm leaving something out here, but I'll let, I'll let Chair Smith follow up with that. But a long week, a long day yesterday, and continue to work on behalf of our constituents. And for those of you who I was unable to return your calls last week, I was very busy, and I promise to work my best to make up for that in the next couple days. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Yeah, this has been a real busy time, as you can imagine, and I testified in the Oregon House of Representatives on the wildfire recovery topic. I sat and listened for an hour before I came on, and those people who testified were citizens who had been adversely affected by the loss of their homes and businesses to the wildfire, mainly from Marion County South. And then the metro area came in, and then I got on. I was wholly moved by their heartfelt testimony. Most of them cried as they were relating their stories to Oregon lawmakers, and this may have been the first time they ever had the opportunity to voice their opinion to a group, a governing body, who they think can help fix their problems. I will say this, as Paul mentioned, FEMA needs to come in and continue supporting and making the promises that this federal government agency is designed to do. We heard stories that people have still displaced from their homes, unable to rebuild without any FEMA funds. I don't know the particulars of it, but that's what they were saying. One man, probably at least 50 years old, said, "I've lost my home. I've lost my business," and he just cried. And he begged lawmakers in the state of Oregon to do something. We find ourselves here in Oregon, in Clackamas County, Oregon, with 62 homes burned and over 200 outbuildings, and that process is very, very slow. I was also slated to testify on a bill, a couple of bills, that would extend the timeline, the building permit time, to rebuild your home in this situation over a year. These homes will not be built in a year. Some of them won't even be started in a year, and that's another bill that Oregon Legislature is considering, and we support that here on the County Board of Commissioners. I also was very pleased with my communications, again with Maria Pope, the CEO of PGE. We made great strides, I think, in our goals to harden the grid system so our people have a good delivery system of the power. But I will remind you, this was a horrific storm, and we were all scrambling to get our power up, setting priorities. We set priorities over the weekend, and PGE delivered on those priorities. But there's always people who get, you know, fall through the cracks, and we're going to do the best we can. We're going to learn and come together and put together some, some good plans. As I know, our board is really wanting to come together and work together in a collaborative way and not be divisive of one another. I think that is very important because when we work together and collaborate together, we will be very successful. And with that in mind, this meeting is adjourned.